Good evening. Welcome to the Northampton City Council meeting of April 16, 2015. I'm City Councilor Bill Dwight. That's where I had to check that. I'm the president and I'll be providing tonight. As is our custom, we open with public comment. Public is invited to speak, excuse me, on any topic, keeping their comments to under three minutes, also acknowledging and recognizing and conforming to the decorum of the chamber. And when you, when I call your name, if you please come up and restate your name and basically correct my pronunciation, and then tell us your address, and then you can proceed to talk. So first up, okay. Is this Thomas Bradburg?
Hi.
See? Glad I had you do that. And what's your address?
Hi, I'm Thomas Bradburg, 99 Federal Street in Florence.
Thank you.
I'm here about the ordinance pertaining to the ban of single-use plastic bags, so to the city council of Northampton. Hello, my name is Thomas Bradburg. I reside at 99 Federal Street, Florence, Mass. I am the store operations manager at River Valley Market, 330 North King Street, Northampton. I'm here to read this letter tonight to the city council during the public comments. Our community's co-op incorporated as Northampton Community Cooperative Market Incorporated, doing business as River Valley Market LLC, does not use plastic bags for grocery bagging at the register. We have eliminated all plastic clamshells and other plastics that cannot be recycled from our fresh foods and prepared foods packaging. We have recently fine-tuned this using the town of Brookline, Massachusetts' new ordinance as guidance. We have also asked our vendors to discontinue use of certain plastics using the Brooklyn ordinance as guidance. River Valley Market does support the ban on plastic bags for bagging groceries at the register. We have been in business in Northampton for seven years and have never had them and will not. We also are hopeful that bags used to bag produce and bulk items will soon be compostable, biodegradable, or recyclable in the near future. Our community-owned food co-op has a triple bottom line: profit, people, and planet. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Mac, you're up, but you know, of course, you get the, you have the floor for a whole period, so.
Right, no, I just want to express my gratitude. On 40 Valley Street, I want to express my gratitude to River Valley Market and Cereals and also, in particular, to the councilors who've played a leadership role in working on the plastic bag ban. I think it's really time to do this. I think there's never going to be a better time, so thanks to all that have been involved in that effort.
Thank you. By the way, Mac Everett, just so, for the public record. Jody Young, please.
Hi. I would also like to voice my support for the plastic bag ban, and I come with some visuals to support that. I lived in Los Angeles, California, Portland, Oregon, and Austin, Texas, prior to moving here four years ago, and all of those cities I was able to participate in and witness efforts to ban the plastic bag, and they were all successful, by the way. And I saw some really good public awareness efforts, and I just wanted to, if I could pass these around?
Oh, please, yeah.
I'll show you some visuals, because I think they're really a long way in supporting and helping the community. I'm in person. Go, please. Start with you.
Thanks.
And this was, I'm not professional, because I, and I wanted to volunteer my efforts to craft, create a campaign should you pass the ban.
Very good, thank you. Thank you. Here, this is actually for the camera. There we go. And Catherine Morris, please.
I'm just gonna read a very brief letter.
And Catherine, I'm sorry, can you state your address?
I'm sorry. Catherine Morris, Nine Prospect Heights, Northampton. And it's about overuse of pesticides in my neighborhood, off of Jackson Street, up Jackson Street, right near the school. And I'll just read briefly, I may cut some of it out. The spraying of synthetic pesticides on trees and lawns is known to be dangerous to humans and animals. Cancer hospitals such as Sloan-Kettering have long warned of the dangers of pesticides. This exposure is cumulative and cause, can cause cancer, damage to neonatal development, endoptric disruptors, and possibly Parkinson's disease. Neighbors are often not notified and passersby, including young children on the way to the Jackson Street School, are in danger of chemical exposure, and I've seen it from my house on Prospect Heights. Residents of this very thickly settled neighborhood are also being exposed to chemicals which are not yet proven safe. And they can get in the drinking water. We all want to protect our trees and lawns, but is spraying dangerous chemicals into urban neighborhoods really the best or even acceptable way to do this? Many state agricultural agencies recommend elimination or minimalization of synthetic pesticides. We suggest that we suspend, although we can't, because I've learned from looking on the Internet all weekend that we can't stop someone from what they do to their own property, but we can raise consciousness, and we can talk about it, we can put up these things, we can distribute these New York Times things. Pass them on, please. In the past, the American Lung Association has given Hampshire County failing smog grades. Do we really want to add more chemicals to this already dangerous level of pollution? We are deeply concerned about protecting the most vulnerable who do not have a voice. Are we going to believe the pesticide companies are Sloan-Kettering Hospital? Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all we have signed up for. Is anyone else interested in speaking at this time? Okay, going once, going twice. Roll call, please.
Counselor Adams.
Here.
Counselor Carney.
Present.
Counselor Dwight.
Here.
Counselor Klein.
Here.
Counselor LaBarge.
Present.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Here.
Counselor Shara.
Here.
Counselor Spector.
Here.
We have a quorum with one absent, and Counselor Adams tonight will be serving as the chair of finance in Counselor Murphy's absence. First up, scheduled at 7:05, so we're five minutes late, but it's a public hearing regarding a poll petition received from National Grid, and I'll accept a motion to open the hearing.
Make a motion.
All of those in favor of opening the hearing, please say aye.
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 I would be interested in hearing from the opponent. Lisa, if you want to come up and talk.
Good evening, Counselor Dwight, members of the council. Lisa Jazinski with National Grid. We are requesting permission to install underground cables on Elm Street from the corner of West Street, approximately 300 feet up Elm Street on the west side of the street. It would be removing a couple of poles with secondary cables, which are low-voltage cables, and installing them underground. It is for a project that Smith College is going to be doing in front of the college there. We also will be, I'm sorry, I think that it's on the sketch, too. We will also be crossing the street over to a streetlight pole that's to the right of St. Mary's as you're looking at it.
Before we get to questions, I was wondering, are there any opponents or any other proponents? I thought not. So, councilors, any questions about this project? I have a question about, more generically about, and this is not relevant to this necessarily, but the running underground cables, of course, has also been a debate around this region for quite some time. The liability of poles, and it's always been appealing to the prospect of running it, but it's, wire's underground, but it's always been considered to be cost prohibitive among other things. Is this, is this an indication of a trend, or is this, as opposed to going across the street with a pole, or is this, is this an experiment, or is this just?
Well, it's not really an experiment, and it's certainly not a trend, but it is at the request of a customer who actually absorbs the cost of the work that's being done. So it's, you know, cost prohibitive, it would be, you know, I can't even imagine, you know, the numbers, thinking about putting poles and wires underground, if you're talking about all of them. I know that in a lot of areas and a lot of developments, it's requested that it's all underground, and that's terrific. I think it's nice that it is that way, but to, to, you know, put all of our utilities underground in crowded streets as they are sometimes is very difficult, along with the cost.
Counselor Carr.
So you did say that this is for the low-voltage cables?
It is. They're secondary cables, they feed streetlights and a couple of traffic signals, which there will be, you know.
And while they're at it, then, my question is, do you know, since they'll already be digging, will they go ahead and run additional conduit for any future use for the high voltage?
No, you know, we had actually petitioned the city some, some years ago, it was quite a few years ago, to actually install high voltage, and just around that corner and connect a couple of feeders, is what we called them, they're, you know, just how they, they go out into the, you know, the neighborhoods to distribute that energy. But it's determined that the way it's all set up now, there's no need for that anymore. Sometimes we, you know, if something goes out, we backfeed it with, you know, other, or other sources, and that no longer is deemed necessary, so they won't.
Okay. And one more, so the timeframe, when do you expect this work would start?
Well, it won't be until after graduation. I think the request is sometime after Memorial Day.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Counselor LaBarge.
Also, looking at the language that has been proposed by the Board of Public Works, they are recommending exactly what they have asked you to do, which is that they are asking you to make sure that you cross Elm Street with cross-city-owned water, sewer, and drain mains, which are five to six feet deep at gas mains. Based on that information, they recommend that the handholds and that can do it be at least than three feet from the edge of the road. So if you didn't get that information, you wouldn't be able to do it, correct?
Yeah, I actually have not seen that, and, and that's fine. That's something that, you know, we work out with the Board of Public Works, you know. I do know that there's going to be, there's a sidewalk along that way, and I believe it's, there's going to be a retaining wall of some sort. I don't know, and I'll have to address that with the Board of Public Works, because I don't know if that gets these handholds actually three feet off, so that will have to be worked out.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Accept a motion to close the hearing?
Make a motion.
All those in favor of closing the hearing, please say aye.
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 I'll accept a motion for approval.
Move approval.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Absentient, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, we come to the communications from the mayor. The mayor is here, prepared to communicate.
Good evening, councilors. I actually have one proclamation that I'd like to issue this evening, and it actually directly affects one of our city departments. It is entitled "Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 13 through the 19th, 2015. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time which require the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics in order to protect life and preserve property, and whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent on the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Public Safety Communications Center, and whereas public safety dispatchers are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services and are a vital link for our police officers and firefighters, and whereas Northampton's 11 public safety dispatchers handle over 37,000 emergency and non-emergency calls last year for the city's police, fire, and emergency medical services, dispatch and coordinate our police officers, fire units, and ambulances, and maintain after-hours contact with the DPW, animal control, and all city buildings, and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job over the past year, and whereas Northampton Public Safety Dispatchers play an active role in the development and training of new police officers, attend fire department training evolutions, and participate in the Citizens Police Academy. Now therefore I, David J. Narckowitz, Mayor of the City of Northampton, do hereby proclaim April 13 through the 19th, 2015, as National Telecommunicators Awareness Week, to honor the dispatchers of Northampton Public Safety Communications Center for their constant devotion to public safety dispatching, consistent excellence in customer service, and the continued pursuit of the goal to protect life and property while maintaining the highest level of professionalism. In witness whereof, I have set my hand and imprinted the seal of the City of Northampton. Mayor David J. Narckowitz. And I'll be, I'll be presenting this to Kelly Bannister and her staff over at the dispatch center, and I just wanted to, this is a national week for, for telecommunications and public safety, and so just wanted to make sure that we recognize our dispatchers during this time.
Thank you. We have, we're up to one minute announcements. I know that Counselor LaBarge has something queued up, so Counselor LaBarge.
Yep, I put one of these flyers on all the councilors' desks. I received this, I went and picked up and checked it on Monday. The, it's a proceed for, and it's called Stere Night Auction. All the proceeds will benefit the RKFRR Ryan Road School PTL, and this will help pay for field trips, cultural events, and technology at Ryan Road Elementary School. This will occur on May 8, 6:30 PM to 10:00 PM at the Look Park Garden House. The admission is $25, and dress code, come as you are. The tickets are available at Ryan Road office, or you can go online at www.brownpapertickets.com. And I went last year, and it was wonderful, and it was a great benefit, so if you councilors are available, to have you there.
Thank you very much. Are there any other one-minute announcements? Counselor Adams.
Northampton Senior Services and Senior Center will be hosting its 13th Annual Health and Safety Fair on Thursday, May 7, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Senior Center at 67 Con Street, and it'll be a free event sponsored for senior citizens, their families, and the community, and there'll be demonstrations, displays, and information, and lunch will be served in Mary's Bistro from 11:00 to 1:30. Everyone's invited.
Counsel O'Donnell.
On Monday, April 27, at 7:00 PM at Bridge Street School, there'll be a presentation slash forum. I believe it's put on mainly by the League of Women Voters, but will feature superintendents on Bobos to discuss public education funding generally, especially in light of declining state aid for our schools. So it's a chance to come and ask questions and learn about this, which is very important to the city. So again, it's Monday, April 27, at 7:00 PM at Bridge Street School.
Any other announcements? Okay. Well, now we're moving up to the resolution to adopt the capital improvement program, FY 2016 to FY 2020, as submitted by Mayor Narckowitz on March 2, 2015. This is the second reading, and I'm going to read the resolution. It's very brief, so. The city council hereby adopts the capital improvement program FY 2016 to FY 2020, submitted by the mayor on March 2, 2016, in accordance with the Charter of Northampton. That's in Massachusetts, for those of you looking for it. Article 7, Finance and Fiscal Procedures, Section 7-5, Capital Improvement Program. I'll accept a motion. Further discussion on this? This is, as I say, it's the second reading. No? Ready? Roll call, please.
Counselor Carney.
This is.
Yes, this, okay, I'm sorry, I was, I just was just to.
You were in another meeting. Yes. Yes.
Yes, I do approve of the capital improvement plan.
Excellent, good news.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Spector.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
It passes. So that passes in second reading, and that has been approved. And now, minus the drum roll, we have a presentation. This is the reuse center opening. We have Ro Schmidt, Mac Everett here to make their case, and they've been kind enough to give us a PowerPoint presentation, so. And I was telling Ro that soon, the council chambers are going to be retrofitted to provide better audiovisual aids, but right now we have to resort to the, the old-school project, screen projection, which should suit you fine, but.
We're happy. When you're done with it, you can bring it up.
We'll bring it to the reuse committee, okay. Perfect.
And I have to apologize, because I passed out a document to you all that's very hard to read, and in fact, a second version has arrived, it's easier to read, so I'm just going to pass a stack over here, and you can all take that and recycle the other one, if you like. That would be great. Okay. Well, good evening. We're here tonight to celebrate the opening of the Northampton Re-Center at 170 Glendale Road. We are the reuse committee of the Commission of Public Works, formerly the Board of Public Works.
The Re-Center has been evolving for many years. The BPW Reuse Committee ran into roadblocks because the Locust Street Transfer Station was just too busy to accommodate additional traffic. When former Mayor Higgins' Solid Waste Task Force recommended using or establishing a reuse center, the Glendale Road facility, and the Glendale Road facility reduced its services, opportunity was ripe to renovate the shed on Glendale Road for this purpose. Now it was possible to keep items from filling up the landfills.
The nature of waste has changed. Oh, sorry.
You should be able to control the mouse. Okay. Just click the left side. Oh, the left side, okay. Cool.
Okay. The nature of waste has changed in volume and composition over the last century. Land values have increased, negative externalities of landfills such as odor have made waste a political and social challenge. Modifications of the amount of waste responds to these waste challenges. Zero waste is a concept to incorporate these new values.
The reuse committee's goal is zero waste. This concept is hierarchical, with reuse of materials trumping recycling. The intent is to keep as much material out of our landfill as possible, so you want to refuse what you don't need, reuse anything you can, reduce what you do need, recycle what you cannot refuse, reuse, or reduce, and rot the rest, or compost.
Why aim for zero? Excess waste results in unsustainable resource mining, air and water pollution, increased energy consumption, public health concerns, and financial burden on local governments.
Reuse items can be shared. The reuse, the Northampton's Reuse Committee has been holding events over the last 15 to 20 years. Mary Ann, you mentioned that when we were talking earlier. But the committee felt that more could be done on a regular basis to keep items out of the landfill. These photos show the bulky, rigid plastic swap and collection from 2012, and the tag sale from 2013.
And this set of photos show the Kids Stuff and Art Materials Event in 2013, and the Holiday Toy Swap in 2013 as well.
And we're not completely abandoning reuse events. We've already scheduled the events for this year. First one will be the opening of the Re-Center.
The Reuse Committee was able to recruit a strong team of professional and seat-of-the-pants volunteers. Northampton architect Tris Metcalf agreed to act as the architect, and former BPW Chair and Northampton City Councilor Bob Recman served as our ever-patient general contractor, and deconstruction professional Dave Giesi, who owns Piece-by-Piece Deconstruction, a local business, volunteered his expertise as well. Electrician Tina Shea, carpenter Alex Geislin, another former counselor, central services Warren Jones, and Jim Mayo, Maylow, excuse me, were also instrumental.
The Reuse Committee from the Public Works Commission put together an industrious group of volunteers who gave up their Wednesdays and Saturdays to convert an old shed on Glendale Road. Alex Geislin took a few panels that needed special work back to his shop, and then returned them shipshape. He also hung the front entry drawer.
After some trenching to get water moving away from the building, workers build the form for a concrete sill. This was a really big project.
Reuse committee members worked second jobs as reuse center carpenters. Shelves and usable space emerged as Diana Riddle, Mac Everett, standing right here, Peter Racklebusch, Alan Calhoun, David Shear, John Sass, and others put saw and screw gun to work.
What else can a reuse committee do but reuse as many items as possible? Screws, doors, wood, and doorknobs were reused whenever possible, and salvaged paint from the Holyoke DPW Paint Project was used. Some new wood paint and concrete was purchased. Jerry Divine of Divine Overhead Doors proclaimed that the existing overhead door was still usable, and after volunteers refurbished the panels, he performed a professional installation.
The Reuse Committee, with the help of a very supportive community, has transformed this worn-out shed into.
A newly refurbished, a refurbished, functional community space.
The guiding principles for the reuse group is based on zero waste. Zero waste means we will work to be a waste-free operation, and will accept only items that are easily reusable and can be dismantled into recyclable parts if necessary.
Zero cost means we won't accept items we'll have to pay to dispose of if no one wants them. If disposal fees apply to risky items, the fees must be paid before an item is accepted.
Demand-driven means we will accept, what we will accept will evolve based on demand, popularity, and available alternative outlets.
Problem-solving means, when possible, we will help you find a way to reuse or repurpose your items.
During the winter, the committee concentrated on establishing policies and procedures to standardize the services provided by the Reuse Center. For example, some items in the center will be unable to, the center will be unable to accept because of their hazardous nature or lack of utility. Disposal fees will still apply according to DPW policies. And so this is an example of the items that we'll accept, and items we can't accept. You have two examples of, of a more lengthy detail. It will also be on the website for the DPW.
Support reuse. Access to the Re-Center may be obtained by the purchase of a transfer station permit at $25 with needs-based discounts applicable, or a new Re-Center sticker for $10. Our Facebook page has grown to over 1,200 followers. Once the Reuse Center is up and running, the Reuse Committee hopes to establish repair workshops, and art workshops, and a variety of other repurposing activities.
In November 2014, our volunteers celebrated our progress. We had a working garage door, an attractive entry, and a roughed-out interior space, but we're still looking for more volunteers, if you know anybody that's interested. So, do you have, have any questions?
Questions, Counselor Klein.
You mentioned that there are certain things that you don't accept. I'm wondering if you have places that you can refer people to that do accept some of those things.
Yeah, we, we're working to establish a network of end-users. Those would be other organizations who might be interested in some of the materials we collect. For example, today I was on the phone with the Survival Center, and they said they would love to have any surplus children's books that we have. So we now know, if somebody brings in a huge number of children's books, that we have someone else that will take them if our customers don't take all of them. So those, those people we refer to as end-users, and there's a number of organizations around the valley that we're inviting to, to let us know what kinds of things that they are looking for, whether it's durable medical supplies, or stuff for kids, or whatever. We are also going to have a big, gigantic bulletin board out there, which will be divided into needs and leads, so if someone has a particular need, they're looking for something, they can. can post it out there. Likewise, if someone has something that they would like to give away, especially something big that we don't necessarily want them to bring to the center, like, let's say somebody has a piano. We don't want them to bring it to us because we only have 800 square feet of space out there. But we can put a note up that says so-and-so has a piano. If you're looking for that, call that person directly, and hopefully that can happen with us facilitating but not actually dealing with the item. So those are two ways. Yeah.
Counselor Klein.
Thank you for all the work you've done on this. On your Facebook page, do you expect that you might also be using that as a way, kind of a virtual clearinghouse for letting people know items such as a piano or things?
Yeah, we're thinking about ways that we can do that. I know a lot of people would like us to do something online that way, to have an online database. It's going to be a bit of a challenge because essentially it's going to be a first-come, first-serve operation. So if people are interested in something, you know, and the other thing, of course, is it's a bit out of town, and some people are a little concerned about that. But our-- we're delighted to have the space. Ned has been fantastic in terms of helping us get it renovated, and we hope it's the start of a lot of good things. I mean, right now, we're really-- the initial phase is the swap shop, this zero-waste swap shop, but we're really hoping that we can go farther with it and have repair clinics. And around the country, there's a lot of tool sharing and make-it-and-take-it workshops, all kinds of things related to repurposing. And we're hoping that as the community learns about us and shows interest that we can do those kinds of things as well. But we're working on the, yeah, the electronic piece, too.
And if I could just add to that, Susan Wade, our recycling coordinator, is working really hard to give Facebook a presence, but we want quick turnover of the items. So it may not be the best place to do it, but it's creating-- I just, I mean--
Jessica, I think started the Facebook page.
It sounds like you have over 12-- you have 12-- almost 1,300.
Right.
Yeah, but it was like several years ago that we started it. But it's only recently that it's really been a communication vehicle.
I think one of the other points that we've been trying to get across to people is that we realize we've got a learning curve to do here. We have to figure out what kind of stuff is the stuff that's really desirable, that people really want, and then we can take lots of that kind of stuff. We know also that there's going to be stuff that nobody wants. And we're, you know, we have a special area for the arts, so we're encouraging artists to come out and help us come up with really creative ways to reuse stuff. If you've gone to our Facebook page, there's lots of great examples of that. So, but there's going to be a learning process for us, and the kinds of stuff that we can accept will change over time depending on what the demand is. So we ask people to be patient with us as we go through that learning process and--
I just want to point out one other example. For example, as I look at that right now, and this was just posted yesterday, a local business is willing to give-- has approximately 25 used paper towel and soap dispensers.
Right.
So that might be something even someone would want to use for household use or swap.
Yeah, that could be. And also, there's actually a New England regional website for businesses who have stuff like that to give away for free. So that would be another end-user that we might, if we ended up with those and suddenly we had an access that nobody wanted, that we know that we could post them out there and make them available to a wider audience.
Great.
Counselor Spector and then Counselor Carney.
Just one, have you-- do you know about Northampton FreeCycle, which is online?
Yeah, and we're encouraging people to use FreeCycle.
Because I was thinking, you could also post, if you got the piano, for example, you could post that.
Right, right. Yeah, and Craigslist also has a free area. And also, people, there was a situation in my neighborhood recently where someone was going to give away a bedroom set, and that's really too big for us to take out there. But I posted it on my neighborhood listserv, and it was gone within 24 hours to a neighbor. So we're encouraging people, again, don't think that it all has to happen out at our site. It can happen in these other decentralized ways as well. Any reuse is good, as far as we're concerned.
There's a Facebook page called Buy Nothing Northampton, East Hampton, as well, same thing. Counselor Labarche.
I want to thank you all. It's been a long time. I do know, way back, about 15 years ago, we worked with Karen Bakoyan very closely and the neighbors on Glendale Road. And at that point, they had made it the Dumpin' Donuts meetings that we had, which we all laughed about that name. And it was brought up many times, people coming in and exchanging. But we didn't have the area to do that. I'm so happy this is happening, and I thank you all for working tirelessly, and I think it will be a great success. My question is, I think you need to repeat the date again because there is some confusion on that.
Yes, yes. We were made aware that there was an article that came out that said it was opening this Saturday, and it's Saturday, the 25th. And the festivities will start at 9:00 that morning.
Thank you.
So, thanks for reminding me. Yeah, Counselor Klein.
I also want to just say thank you so much. I think this is incredible. It's such an incredible resource for the city. And it's also really inspirational to see all of these volunteers that have come together and donated time and expertise. So that's really exciting. And I just wanted to ask one more thing. Do you imagine there being-- you having the ability to kind of go and pick things up from folks that may be older that don't have a way to get them to the site, or the volunteers that are willing to do that, kind of provide that kind of service, just to kind of assist all kinds of people who can't?
It's a nice thought.
Yeah, we haven't that capacity right at the moment. But, you know, that's, again, going back to the neighborhood listserv thing, we're hoping that people, that there will be people in each neighborhood that are really excited about what we're doing, and that they might be able to, if to car-- to offer carpooling possibilities if there are people that don't have cars, or, like you say, if they're aware of something we have that a neighbor might need, and they're willing to help transport that, that would be great. You know, again, this depends a lot on the, on the kind of response we get in terms of our volunteer network. We're really looking for volunteers for helping to run the center on the Saturday mornings. But we're also looking for people like that, people who might be willing to do some transportation. Or we're also looking, if you know people that like to tinker. We've already roped in Alex Geislin, and he's very good at this. But people who like to fix things, we're taking in stuff, right now, we're taking in stuff that is in working condition. We'd like to be able to take in stuff that needs light repairs and that we can send to a woodworker or someone that likes to work on appliances or whatever. So we're really on the lookout for those sorts of people, and if you're aware of any of them in your constituencies, please tell them to get in touch with us.
Counselor Shara and then Counselor Labarche.
I'm beyond excited, so thank you so much for this. So the intake guidelines that you gave us, are those on the DPW website?
They are.
Not yet, but they're going to go up? Okay, great. I feel like I should be able to figure this out, but I'm failing at it. What does BB stand for on here?
Bulletin Board. So if you see that, that means it's an item, for example, I'm just looking down here, log splitter is one. So a log splitter is something that we wouldn't take out there, but we would put it on our bulletin board and try to facilitate the movement of it to someone that was looking for it.
We're also calling it the Needs and Leads Board. So somebody might need something, somebody might have a lead for something, so.
Right. And some of that's driven just by the size of things. Yeah.
And is the PowerPoint presentation, I assume, in fact, going to be on the site as well? I mean, I've just, you know, I think I and many people have been trying to promote it every way possible. So it would be nice for people to be able to see the evolution of it.
That'd be great.
And one last question. Did you see what the hours are?
The hours, it's going to be open from 8:00 until 11:30 on Saturdays, and then the last half hour it's closed for us to clean up. That facility is also open on Wednesday mornings. At this point, we're not going to be open Wednesdays. But again, if we get an upswelling of volunteers, then there's a possibility we could expand to being open that day as well. But for now, it's Saturdays from 8:00 to 11:30. Yeah.
Counselor Labarche.
Yes, can they get the reuse sticker there?
Yes, it's both, it's $10 for just the reuse sticker, unless you already have a transfer station sticker. You can either get it at the DPW where you can get a transfer station, or at the Glendale Road.
Some people asked me about that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? No? Just, how did, you know, I think it's kind of relevant to explain how you guys got funded and subsidized, how you sustain yourselves.
Okay, well, last year, we submitted, after some months of preparation, we submitted a business plan to the Board of Public Works, and they accepted it. I think it was last May. And they agreed to let us use the space, and they also funded us for $10,000, which has gone into the renovations. And then also, the council voted last year to let us have one of those funds, a small, I can't remember what the term is for it.
Gift fund of sorts of things.
Yeah, so that, you know, that's, so that we are able to accept small donations. And we haven't done too much of that, but we will be accepting small donations out there because we have ongoing costs like publicity and utilities and all the rest of it. So those, and that's, am I forgetting anything?
No, but I will say that we haven't spent all of our line items yet.
Right, right.
Everybody's worked so hard on this and gotten donated items. So I think we've only bought wood and some--
Very many stuff, what?
Concrete.
Yeah, concrete, right, exactly.
Well, the reason I ask is I think it's relevant for people who might be interested in donating to the project. I mean, clearly, I've heard nothing but enthusiastic response about this, even in its initial stages, when you guys first started floating this idea way those many years back. So giving, providing people an opportunity to know that they can not only donate materials, but they have an opportunity to donate money to help sustain this project. So, and again, I'll call everyone else's back here and say, really, thank you very much. This is, not only does it make sense, it's actually, it has a sexy appeal. I personally, I have the, it's not an ethos, it's actually kind of an obsession. I like recycling things and reusing things or tinkering things with myself, and that having an opportunity to have one central point that's essentially curated is a real bonus. And I don't suspect I'm alone with that singular obsession, but--
Yeah, we all hate to see things thrown away that could, that still have some use. And it's tremendously exciting when we're in between two parties, one of whom is generously giving something and the other is really grateful to get it. It's just a great feeling. And it's reducing our carbon footprint at the same time, so.
It's as Yankee as you get.
Yeah, yeah, I've been telling, a lot of people--
Christmas year round.
Right. A lot of people don't realize that our solid waste in Northampton now is getting shipped to upstate New York, almost 300 miles away. And so this is, anything we can do to cut down our carbon footprint in regards to that, I think is really good.
Well, and that was after the closing of the landfill, the discussion about reducing our waste production, the fact that we're no longer controlling our own waste and it's, and whatever possible side effects it would have, it was an opportunity to at least, at the very least, reduce what we contribute to the waste stream. And I think this is an excellent process. So, so thank you very much again.
Thank you.
Thank you for--
Nice PowerPoint, thanks. Oh, there's David. So, now we're back into the meat of the meeting. Up next, we actually have a lot of licenses and petitions. These all come due the same time every year. I suspect the inclination is going to be, want to take them as a group. I would ask that you separate out, at least on the first, on Section A, Feeding Tube Records, if you would, because I have a conflict there, so I'd need to recuse myself on that one. But if we could, if you're prepared to--
Take the rest.
So if you want to, I'll accept a motion to accept them, and actually allow me to read the, this is the annual second-hand dealers license renewal, and this is for the Cancer Connection of 375 South Street, Jack Spire Antiques of 416 North Main Street in Leeds, Norman Menard of 25 Garfield Avenue, the Family Jewels of 56 Green Street, Back Alley Antiques and Collectibles at, of 238 Bridge Street, Antiques Corner of 5 Market Street, Stuart Solomon at 28 North Maple Street, Ryan Jewelers, 14 Strong Avenue, Feeding Tube Records of 221 Pine Street, Wild Mutation Records at 52 Main Street in Florence, and the Urban Exchange of 233 Main Street. So, except--
I'll move all of them as a group except for Feeding Tube Records.
Yes, I second that.
As a second, okay. Any discussions on these petitions? And we have, we have all the applications and licenses, and you can see that they've been, they're up to date on their taxes, and, but any other further discussion on these? Okay. Can we do this by a voice vote, or is, I think we can do this by a voice vote, by guy?
By voice.
All right, I'll, all those in favor of those petitioners being granted the license, please say aye.
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 Opposed, and any abstentions? Okay, now I'll accept that they passed, and I'll accept a motion for Feeding Tube Records.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that item? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 I'm abstaining. And any opposed? Okay. Now we can, back.
Can I just interrupt for one second? If you have any leftovers in those sheets?
I've been instructed to reuse them.
There you go.
Thank you.
That would have been awkward. Okay. Next up, we have the annual junk dealers license renewal, and this is for Norman Menard of 25 Garfield Avenue and Richard and Sharon Huntley of 254 East Hampton Road. Now I'll accept the--
Take it as a group.
Okay, that's been moved. Is that second? Is it a second? Okay. Any discussion on these? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? That those licenses are approved. Next, of course, is the, the annual bowling license renewal. We have the Northampton Bowl of 525 Pleasant Street. They're down here twice. One's, oh, one's, and one, yeah, thank you. And the clerk has notified me, the one's a Sunday license and the one's the regular license. So you want--
Take it as a group.
Take them as a group.
So I'll assume somewhere in there is a motion and a second. So any discussion on the bowling license renewal? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? That passes as well. Now, of course, the annual pool table license renewal, and that's for Packards at 14 Masonic Street, and they're also applying for a Sunday license.
Move as a group.
Moved as a group and second. Any discussion on the pool table license renewal? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up, we have the annual taxi cab license renewal, and there's, one of the petitioners is here and actually would like to speak to us. But before we do that, we should get it on the floor. But we have Cosmic Cab of 78 Con Street, and that's six taxi cab license petitions. Then Mercedes Cab Company Incorporated doing businesses, Go Green Cab, 376 East Hampton Road. There are two taxi cab license petitions. And then we also have Mercedes Cab Incorporated doing business as Funky Cab at 376 East Hampton Road. That's four taxi cab license petitions. So I'll accept the motion for those as a group.
Take it as a group.
A second. And would you like to come and speak to these? There's been a motion to recognize Don Lynch, and, well, the motion's been made, and I will accept that as a second, and Don, go up the floor.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm here tonight to read a letter that was written by our CEO, Raphael Richter, and he unfortunately was not able to attend today. He really wanted to be here, but he had prior obligations. He does plan to make an appearance at a meeting soon. I do have copies of the letter for everybody.
Okay, this is one for the public record, and, yeah, thank you.
All right. Dear counselors, as you may have read in the newspaper recently, Mercedes Cab Company has purchased Go Green Transportation, formerly The Taxi and Green Cab. In conjunction with Funky Cab, another entity of Mercedes Cab, we're working hard to expand our service in order to provide exceptional transportation services to the community of Northampton. Mercedes Cab is a 33-year-old, family-run business based out of Provincetown, a community very similar in some respects to Northampton, and in many ways, of course, very much not the same. We operate throughout Cape Cod, providing over 100,000 trips per year. We operate throughout Cape Cod, providing over 100,000 trips per year to residents and visitors, and we're very committed to the communities we serve, to the many drivers we contract, and to the dispatchers and mechanics that work in our operations. We intend to create and sustain many jobs in Northampton, which is demonstrated by our recent expansion and rental of garage and office space on East, excuse me, on East Hampton Road. Our services have allowed us to work with many communities on regulatory matters. After operating in and around Northampton for over two years now, we have observed and learned many things, and feel that there's much room for improvement and clarification of the city's taxi and livery rules and regulations, which will then benefit your residents and visitors. A vibrant full-service transportation company such as ours is comprised of many different types of for-hire vehicles. In Massachusetts, there are several registration plate types that are used for different purposes, and it's very common for transportation companies, for a transportation company, to market itself as a taxi or shuttle service, and have different types of vehicle registrations to be included and used for different for-hire purposes. Examples of these for-hire plate types and their uses include taxi plates, which is defined as a private passenger motor vehicle, registered as such, with or without a taxi meter, used or designed to be used for the conveyance of passengers for hire from place to place, but not over a fixed route or between fixed and regular termini. This type of vehicle may be requested by call to a dispatcher or hailed on a public roadway for securing a ride, and it may also pick up passengers in areas that are designated for taxis, meaning cab stands, basically. Livery plates are defined as a private passenger motor vehicle, including but not limited to limousines, registered as such, the designed seating capacity of which does not exceed 16 people, including the driver, for hire or transport rented by means of a telephone or smartphone request to the registered place of business of the owner, or a contract arranged in advance of the time for a designated pickup. The following, we've added emphasis to because we feel like this really hits at the heart of the difference between a taxi and a livery vehicle, no licensed livery vehicle may pick up a person in response to a street hail, or may stand in special areas authorized for taxi cabs, AKA cab stands. In all of our service areas, we operate a combination of livery and taxi vehicles in order to best serve that community. The reason to not just have one type of registration is that taxi plates can cost about three to five times more to insure than livery plates, but they still provide the exact same level and type of liability protection. Therefore, in communities that don't have many street hail or flag fares, such as Northampton, which we find to be about 95% called-in fares, we operate more livery vehicles in order to provide a better service for the community by having more for-hire vehicles on the road. Additionally, we plan to make major reinvestments in our fleet by acquiring later model vehicles, and it's much easier to lease or purchase newer equipment for use as livery vehicles as the cost to insure it is much lower. It's clear that the city's rules and regulations, as well as regulators, must take a closer look at the laws governing taxi and livery services in the city, and this is the primary reason for our letter today. Please consider the following. First, city code 316-21, requiring meters to be used by all taxi companies, is being flagrantly ignored by all parties. It is our opinion that meters would be a great service to the city, as they would reduce fares slightly for shorter trips in the downtown area while providing a more fair rate for passengers in the outlying parts of the city. However, one way or the other, we do feel that it is highly unfair to be selective about choosing which parts of the city code to enforce. Additionally, there is no provision anywhere in our laws to allow for livery vehicles to be part of a transportation company's portfolio of vehicles, and this creates a very uncomfortable situation for a company like ours trying to abide by the rules as we are told that we cannot use livery-plated vehicles. When we've asked the city how it is that longstanding companies, such as Aaron's Paradise or The Valley Transporter, or any private limo company, how these companies have been, sorry, how it is that long-established companies operate livery vehicles in the town legally, we are frequently told it's because they don't have offices here in Northampton. This doesn't change the fact that they're offering service in the town and should be subject to the same rules and fair competitive environment as any other business. Transportation companies operate and do business on the roadways not based on where they're physically located. Not enforcing the law equally is creating an unlevel playing field and a disadvantage for newer companies, doing a disservice to the residents and visitors of the city as well by inhibiting competition and innovation. As you know, transportation companies that provide taxi and livery services to a community represent a public-private partnership. Transportation companies should happily carry people of all socioeconomic classes and backgrounds without discrimination or bias, which represents a vital part of any city's transportation network. Our goal is to be a vibrant part of the Northampton community and provide the best transportation services that the city has ever had, but we ask that you assist all transportation companies by clarifying and updating the rules and regulations. We look forward to being a part of any working groups or forums on the topic that lead up to any potential changes. Thank you very much for your time and consideration, respectfully Raphael Richter. And I would like to also add that all of our managers are fully in support of every part of this letter, and I'm fully prepared to answer any and all questions that you might have as a representative of the company and of Raphael.
Have any questions, Don, at this time? Councilor O'Donnell.
I just want to be clear, are you saying there's no explicit allowance for livery in our state, and you can sue that to me, and if there's a prohibition on it?
I've been told that, yes.
Okay, may I ask who told you that?
The city clerk's office, basically, because the state requires that a vehicle for hire is licensed in the city or town in which it's operating, and the city of Northampton refuses to grant licenses to livery-plated cars.
Historically, I think it was two years ago, I might be wrong here, but we had a number of cab companies, in fact, actually, Don has referred to them, that were, that were abusing their licensing privileges under livery standards, and the police chief was cracked down on them, but essentially, that was like Quicksilver. I think that one of the things that Don's referring to is they just set up shop somewhere else and still operate here in town.
Both taxi and livery-plated vehicles, I will add.
Taxi, taxi tags, too.
Can I just ask, what did that abuse entail? What was that?
I think that, as Don described it, there are limitations to what livery vehicles can do. They were functioning as cabs, and, but using their livery tags, which, and livery tags don't have the same strict criteria in some respects, and so there was just this kind of circumventing. And as Don points out, it is, it's cheaper to insure. Why the insurance companies make that distinction, I'm not particularly sure, but the fact remains is that that, you know, there were some cute cost-cutting corners that were made that the police chief took issue with. The thing that strikes me in this is that the requiring for metering without actual enforcement is a little frustrating, the fact that, I mean, we require child seats, and I presume that's enforced, I hope so, but if it's going to be a requirement, then it seems to me that there certainly should be uniformity in enforcement of that. And I personally hear these concerns and suggestions, and I think that, I think it's probably a good time to reconsider how we license and apportion licenses in Northampton so that we can do whatever we can to keep the people who are inclined to shrug off the rules, keep them in check, and then allow, and allow and improve the opportunities for people who abide by the rules. And I should say that, and I'd like to say that all the petitioners that we're currently reviewing tonight have all proven themselves historically now, so. So, point taken, thank you.
Wonderful, and if I may briefly also just mention, we had submitted, or rather, I had submitted a letter in regards to this same topic quite a few months ago to each of you and to the chief of police, which I didn't receive any kind of response about, and I just wanted to mention that because in that letter, we had requested a public hearing, which I think that we still, you know, that request still stands from that letter. I have a copy here if you'd like it, an additional copy.
Did you send that snail mail or electronically?
I believe I dropped it off at the office.
Okay.
And actually, I shouldn't say there was no response, the chief wrote back to me and said that he would pass it along to the appropriate parties, which I never heard from anyone after that. And we also wanted to point out the fact that there are maximum meter rates on the books right now. Those haven't been updated in almost 20 years, and additionally, I've spoken with John Frey, the person.
John Frye, yeah.
John Frye, who does the taxi meter inspections, and he was, he, he does not think that maximum rates should be enacted, and he doesn't actually think that it is the city's place, of course, I'm paraphrasing him here, to put maximums in place. So, that letter suggests new maximum rates. I would like to rescind that statement and go with what John had said, that we don't think maximums should be in place at all.
Can I make a suggestion, Don? I think part of the problem why you didn't get a response is put in our city mailboxes, and I have to say that we're not, we're moving into the 21st century, and we aren't paying too much attention.
Gotcha.
We've got, we get a lot of spam in our boxes. If you could transmit this electronically.
Sure.
So that, one, it'll help to introduce it in the public record, and then we can proceed from there.
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's wonderful.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Okay, any, okay, thank you, Don.
All right, thanks for your time.
I can scan this in.
Yeah, no, it's good, she, actually, Don, if you send an updated electronic version, rescinding your call for a maximum, okay? So she'll have an updated version, it's just sent to us. Okay, so the motions were made for, again, for Cosmic Cab and Mercedes Cab Doing Businesses Go Green, and it also has Funky Cab. Motion's made in second, and all those in favor of granting the licenses, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, there's that. I'll accept a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? That's from April 2nd, 2015. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilor O'Donnell, yeah?
I offered a correction earlier in the week to Pam, and I think in so doing, I might have created another error, so just a small, very small thing, I would say very briefly, on page 370. This is crucial information. Items 15.355 about snow removal, there was a friendly amendment about highway business, and I believe Councilor Carney offered it, not Councilor Klein, so. I'll email you that information, but if that's not clear, it sounds like it probably wasn't, but.
So.
The bit was here.
She's placed, so whatever you sent me, that's what I put in.
Well, I may be the blame, but I'm just trying to offer the correction, yeah.
So the recommended correction is to reflect that Councilor Carney was the maker of the motion as opposed to Councilor Klein?
I do recall making that.
Yes.
Motion to include.
It was so long ago.
Highway Business District in the.
Is this the kind of detail that we ought to have in the minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
No, no, that's important, actually, the maker of the motion, and you should own that, yes.
Great, thank you.
So all the Yankee letters can be rechanneled and sent. All right, as amended, or, yeah, as corrected, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we have no reports from committees' appointments and elections, we have, we do have appointments and reappointments to committees.
I would say for the first, for the tree commissioner, we take those as a group, I second.
Yes. Are the motions for the tree, the newly established tree committee, Public Shade Tree Commission, and I'll read the names and butcher their names. Melon Castrata of 79 West Street, Todd Ford of 78 Fern Street, Jay Gerard of 158 Ryan Road, Lily Lombard at 39 Monroe Street, Robert Postle, 44 Washington Avenue, Andrew Smith of 10 Myrtle Street, and Jennifer Werner at 16 Winthrop Street. So the motion's been made. Second, anyone want to speak to these?
Ask it.
Yes, it's been, we've got that point now, we want to speak to, about the applicants. They come with positive recommendations from the Committee on Rules, Orders, Appointments and Ordinances, so. And I know that they're not, these guys are raring to get to work, we're already going to refer stuff to them right out of the gate, and they're, and this is the season for it, so it's very appropriate that by Arbor Day that we have Arbor specialists ready on queue. Actually, I'm going to have a roll call on this, so, roll call, please.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Spector.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
We have a tree commission, and congratulations and thank you to all those people who stepped up to do this. This is actually a rather august body, and I know in discussion with the mayor, he had an embarrassment of riches when he came to application. A lot of people eager to participate in this, I'm psyched about this, and I know Councilor Carney's going to be calling them up ASAP. She has an issue right away to deal with as well, so they'll be busy right out, right out of the gate. Next up, we have the, for the Northampton Housing Authority, Jeffrey Jones, 76 Woods Road, term beginning March 2015, expiring June 2018. This is a reappointment.
I'm going to second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on this reappointment?
Just to note that Jeff Jones has also accepted the chair of the housing authority, so it's appropriate that we.
Since he's the chair, we accept it, then it seems very appropriate to, I think. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next up is the Board of Health, we have Donna Salum of 83 Pomeroy Terrace, this is a March 15, 2015 to June 2018 term for a reappointment.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, any discussion on this appointment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Don is in again. The Agricultural Commission reappointments, we have John Bobala?
Bobala.
Bobala, damn. I always get the wrong syllable, and sort of, okay, and Earl Parsons of 137 Mill Valley Motion's been made to move them as a group, their terms start March 2015, which we've seen the back of, and expire June 2018. Any discussion on the appointment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions? Okay. And then last up on this is the Conservation Commission, we have Tricia McGovern of 53 Avis Circle in Florence, term starting this month, and then expiring June 2018. Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? All right, Tricia McGovern's now on the conscion. Now we come to appointments to the Northampton Housing Authority, and this is for referral to rules, ordinance, appointments and orders, ordinances, and this is Michael Roy of 243 Park Hill Road, Alex Akers or Akers of 32 Washington Place, and Jim Rice of 108 Coles Meadow Road, and these are terms starting this month and expiring June 2018. Motion's been made to refer and seconded, any discussion on the referral? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Wow, that's, that's about 220 pages of the. the agendas so far we just chewed through. I don't know if anyone's seen the actual paper document of this meeting tonight. It's 275 pages, so that's, we have meeting minutes for the Committee on Rules, Orders, Appointments, Ordinances, as the minutes of March 9th, 2015. We also have Finance Committee meeting minutes of January 15, 2015, and February 5th, 2015, March 5th, 2015, and Public Safety minutes of March 2nd, 2015, and the Public Works Committee of the City Council minutes, meeting minutes of February 23, 2015.
Suggest we take it as a group unless there's--
Motion's been made and seconded to move them as a group. Any discussion on these minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Now we come to the Finance Committee, and I cede the gavel to Counselor Adams, who will be presiding over finance as we go into recess.
Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Counselor Adams?
Here.
Counselor LeBarge? Counselor Shara?
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this matter? All those in favor? Aye, unanimous. We'll move to agenda item number four, which are, which is financial order, 15.396 water and sewer rates for FY 2016 revised. Upon the recommendation of the mayor, it is ordered that-- The following water and sewer rates be in effect for fiscal year 2016, July 1st, 2015 to June 30th, 2016. Water, $5.58 per cubic, per 100 cubic feet, and sewer, $6.08 per 100 cubic feet. Mr. Mayor, would you like to speak to these?
Certainly. And I did provide you initially with a memo based on my original recommendation to you, that I submitted to the council originally. And there's, there was a memo that actually from Mr. Huntley to me on March 30th. And then obviously, I submitted a revised memo on April 10th, 2015. So effectively, this revised recommendation would hold the rates where they are currently for another year. As we talked about in the memo, we do anticipate that we have a number of critical investments that we need to make over the next several years. The department is in the process of finalizing the significant asset management plans that they've been working on, and actually that the City Council and Mayor have supported the funding for, beginning in 2009. And so the hope would be that we'd be able to get those asset management plans finalized. We'd have an opportunity to really present them to the public, so the public could understand the issues that we will need to deal with, particularly significantly at the wastewater treatment plant on Hockenham Road, which, as the memo points out, was, you know, built in the 70s. There've been some upgrades done to it, but it does require some significant upgrades that we'll need to be able to schedule and begin planning our debt schedules for. There's also a number of water-related projects, including one, a dam, some dam projects that need, need work a few years off into the future as well. So I do not make this recommendation to freeze the rates lightly, as I said in my memo, but at the same token, as I pointed out in the memo, you know, this is the first time that we're operating under this new system of the City Council and the mayor setting the rates. I think, based on the general law since 1921, that the other system went into effect. And I do feel like when we put together the budget calendar for this year, which was, you know, November, December, we had sort of had, we'd sort of had a placeholder for this rate setting, but I don't think we really allowed enough time for it. I don't, it kind of truncated the process. It kind of put the council in a position of having to do it sort of in a one-month period or less. I have to submit the budget by May 15th to you. The rates dictate the budget. And I did hear a lot of excellent questions and a lot of excellent concerns at the hearing that the Committee on Public Works held. And frankly, there are some of the same questions that I've had and want to have an opportunity to explore, including looking at the possibility of tiered rates, and looking at the possibility of providing some need-based discounts to people, like we do with property tax, and some of, and like we've done, like this council did with the new stormwater utility. The difficulty is, it will be impossible to try to enact those by when I need to submit the budget to you on May 15th. So, and in fact, we've already begun some discussions about working on, on bringing in some folks who are experts at analyzing municipal water and sewer rates, and coming up with scenarios for different tiering. When I say tiering, some communities adopt a system whereby the first several units of water that a person consumes, you pay one rate for that water. Then you move up into a higher tier of water consumption, and you pay a different rate, you know, above that first tier. And then once you get into a third tier, you're paying a different rate. So I guess the analogy I would use would be to ta, to our tax system, the current system we have is kind of a flat tax, meaning that if you're a mega user or you're a small user, you're paying the same rate, but obviously, you know, your ability to pay, there's a lot of other factors that go into it. The, you know, by, by tiering it, I think it also builds in a ethic around water conservation, because folks that are using less water will pay less. And so it sort of incentivizes water conservation, which is what we want. So, so I think those are, these are all the possibilities that I want to be able to look at, bring forward. But we don't have the time to do that. And I really feel like I want to also, as we incorporate this, these two budgets, the enterprise fund budgets for water and sewer, into our overall budget structure, and now that I'm more directly overseeing these two enterprises and working more closely with the DPW, there's a lot more work that we want to do around how we present the information, how we align it with the rest of the budget. So, what will be the impact? I know that's the, that's the $64,000 question of not, of not enacting the rather modest increases that I had initially proposed. The, on the water side, and I spoke about the proposed budget being approximately $6.8 million for the Water Enterprise budget under the, under the original proposal. By freezing the rates for a year, it will generate $186,000 less in revenue than had we increased it. And so what essentially that will require us to do, if you look at the memo that we produced for you originally, it means that some of the, well, primarily, one of the water design projects, we would put off a year. That's the old Ferry Road project. And of the design projects, that is, you know, that's a project that we wanted to get into the design process, but it's tied with a larger stormwater project dealing with Ward 3 in the Connecticut River that's on a much probably longer timeframe. So, so that's one that I think if it does get delayed, I don't think it's going to have a critical impact, because that's going to be a longer-term project. It will also reduce the amount of, it will also reduce funding that would be put into a stabilization fund, about $30,000. It would go into a stabilization fund for future projects. And it would also require some minor reductions in, in O&M line items to be able to, to not have that rate increase versus what I originally proposed. On the sewer side, as I described at the, at the committee meeting, the proposed budget there was about $6.2 million for sewer. The reduction in revenue that would result from freezing the rates is $182,000. And for the counselors that were at that hearing, we showed basically a pie chart of what the sewer budget consisted of, and largely it consisted of O&M. Then there was about $500,000 to $600,000 that was devoted to ongoing debt service. And then there was a separate slice of the pie, which was about $1.3 million that would go into stabilization toward future projects. So what we would essentially do is reduce that $1.3 million allocation by $182,000. Again, keeping in mind that that $1.3 million is designed to be built up over time to be able to handle the debt service of these future projects that we lay out in the, that's laid out for you in that original memo, which includes some fairly significant projects related to the, significantly to the wastewater treatment plant, as well as some of the dam projects, which, you know, the Ryan and West Whately Reservoir Project, which is on the order of $6 million. And these are projects that are projected out in the 2019, 2020, 2021 timeframe. So, my hope is that we will have an opportunity to spend the next 12 months really, well, first of all, the, the other piece that I mentioned, the presentation to both the public and to the council of these new capital asset plans and some of the needs, so that people can really understand the needs, and then at the same time, have the opportunity to really work on other possible rate scenarios, so that we can bring forward something that, that might provide, or might answer some of the questions or address some of the issues that, that I heard about at the Committee on Public Works hearing. Counselor LeBarge?
Mayor, I know at the meeting, we've talked about, we have many people who are over that threshold of getting exempt in the city. And you did state and told me directly that you would possibly meet with Joan Seraphin in regards of looking at the state regulations of how their formula is to see if you could do amendments. Are you still thinking of doing that?
I'm, you know, as I mentioned at the meeting, I'm very mindful of how all of our rates, whether they be taxes or utilities, impact folks who are on a fixed income. And so we are going to be examining those and examining not only what we have set up locally, but some of the state formulas that dictate, particularly right now on the property tax side. It's also the same formulas that we apply to stormwater and to some of the other programs. But, but we will definitely be, that will be definitely a part of it, to find out, so what we can do to address that issue, because one of the common issues we've heard is that the, basically, the council is referring to the income limits that we set. And some of them are driven by state formulas that we must abide by. Some of them are actually driven by social security numbers that we get from the federal government. And so we are going to be looking at those and figuring out if there's ways that we can update those, because that is a common concern we've heard, is that, you know, you set the cutoff at a certain point, and some people meet it, but then there may be other people who have a need but don't meet it. So we're going to have to figure out how we can, how we can look at those numbers.
Right, and I'm hearing that also from many veterans. And we had a couple of veterans at that meeting, where they don't get exempt for anything.
Yeah, I mean, again, I mentioned at the hearing that, you know, we did, you know, my administration did try, did implement the, the Tax Work Off Program for veterans and for seniors, and that's providing some opportunities for, for tax relief for veterans. Veterans are eligible for some benefits, obviously, you know, through some of the Chapter 115 and other programs. And there are some exemptions specifically for disabled veterans. But, but that would be something we would take a look at. As I've said before, I, 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 for me, it really is about having things be need-based and having things be based on what people's, you know, needs are, and that we take a look at people's income levels, and we take a look at what, what is reasonable for, for folks who are on a fixed income, who are trying to remain in their homes in Northampton. So we do want to look at ways that we can try to make sure that we're not pricing people out. At the same time, and I give credit to many of the folks who were there, you know, folks acknowledge the fact that we do need to take care of these systems. I mean, we heard from somebody who came to that hearing, who was very much opposed to the rates, but then she also heard that we were going to upgrade the water system on North Farms Road, which, you know, has very bad water pressure and, and including for fire suppression. And she understood why that really needed to be done. So it's a balancing act. I think people understand intuitively, particularly if it's the water on their street or the sewer on their street, that that costs money, and we have to be able to invest in that. And obviously, things like the wastewater treatment plant, where we're dealing with, you know, highly regulated activities by the DEP and the EPA, and we have to get that right, because we're, otherwise we'll be putting sewage into the Connecticut River, and we'll be subject to penalties and fines. You know, these are public safety issues, clean drinking water, proper sewage disposal. So we're, for me, the main thing is, and I, and this is what I've tried to apply to all the work that I've done, particularly as it relates to the budget, is really educating people and putting the information out there so that they can understand it. And I think when, when we've done that, I think people have responded to that, and I think people in Northampton have responded to that. So that's kind of what I want to make sure we do for the whole water and sewer rate process. And unfortunately, I felt like we were so pressed for time that we really weren't able to do that justice, so.
I think that will be an excellent idea to go into that direction, Mayor. I also wanted to let you know, I did have a couple of residents who asked me to present a couple of questions tonight to you.
Okay.
What will be the repercussion of not raising water and sewer rates this year? Do you want to add that?
Well, I, I did actually just detail that for folks, so I mentioned the fact that we would be, it would be $186,299 less of revenue in the Water Enterprise Fund, which would affect, would affect at least one design project. It would also result in some reductions in, in what was being allocated to stabilization, as well as some cuts in, in the O&M light item. On the sewer side, I mentioned that the freezing the rates would result in $182,678,000 less in revenue, and that that would be primarily taken from what had been projected to go into the stabilization fund for, for the Sewer Enterprise Fund.
I just want to make sure that they're hearing--
So that's, those are, those are impacts. I mean, you also have to understand that the rates also have a, you know, they, they build upon each other from year to year. So, so that's, you know, $182,000 in revenue this year, but then next year, it has an impact. So it does have a longer-term impact. So, you know, it's, I, I want to emphasize that we, I, I fully suspect that I will be bringing forward in a year, a proposal that, that will require additional investment. What I'm hoping is that if we can structure the rate, if we can come up with some tiering potential, if we can come up with some other programs, particularly aimed at people who are, you know, in that category we discussed on a, on a fixed income and have limited resources, then I think that may be a way that we could present it, that people will, that will, that will be more acceptable to people.
And another question was, what steps or actions can or will be taken to mitigate, to offset it?
I think, you know, if I, if I understand your correction, I, your question, I think will obviously be working to make sure that we're not, that these, well, I don't want to call them cuts. It's sort of like revenue that we're not raising. We're not, we're not actually proposing to lay anyone off or to cut any staff or anything like that. Obviously, the resources we do have, the DPW and the folks in the water and sewer departments are obviously going to focus on the most critical projects and, and obviously work on the most critical projects. And, and I think as I've described, the, the impacts, the, the projects that are being pushed off are not, are not deemed critical right now. But obviously, some of these projects in the future are critical, and so we have to really get about planning to do them.
Also, I have a group on my ward right now that are bringing up about the pilot program and about you-- program and about you as a mayor, because as city consellers, we cannot negotiate with, like, Smith College and so forth like that. But to work with them to see if there is a way possible that we could have Smith College come in and help the city out financially.
Counselor?
You know, I'm talking about because there are shortfalls that apparently might occur in the next two years in our school systems, we're hearing this. I think if we can make an agreement with them, it would be a good thing to do to work with Smith College or even some of the private entities.
Counselor LaBarge?
To help defray.
Can you explain how this is relevant to the water and sewer rates, please?
Yeah, but this is what it is. They're talking, Counselor Adams, people on my ward about the mayor looking at Smith College to go into a pilot program to help defray the cost of what's happening here. So that's it.
Okay, and I've, I've heard from folks about that and I, and definitely payment in lieu of taxes is something that I'm engaged in, and, and I'll be saying a little bit more about that soon, but I appreciate you reiterating those comments.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor, go ahead.
I, I hope that in the calculus, as you're trying to figure out the tier system that you, we take into account that unfortunately fees in and of themselves tend to be somewhat regressive, and particularly when it's water consumption, because people of means actually can afford lower flow systems and also addressing leaks, which I know the mayor's always described that, that, I mean, leaks are probably the biggest culprit, and people can afford to have those fixed. So consequently, you can have someone in a much larger home that's more up-to-date, that is consuming and using less water and discharging more in the sewers than someone who's on a fixed income who doesn't have the ability to, to augment those. And that becomes, it gets really tricky, and it's, unfortunately, this is, as I've often described, this is a situation that's usually handed to us as we abdicate, essentially, well, in some cases, collecting taxes from corporations and wealthier people, we defer to establishing fee structures and, and then relying on property taxes, knowing that this, this is the limits of your abilities here. But if there is some tier system that the state smiles upon that allows us to accommodate those who might not be able to readily address their, their consumption beyond reducing use, which I think you heard during the testimony, and I got a lot of letters to that effect, that a lot of people have been, been very assiduous about that, been trying to really limit their use and reusing water and gray water and the like, yet still at the same time feeling the burden. The, the other thing that I wanted to say was, so that wasn't so much a question, it was just a suggestion, and also that I, I think what I wasn't able to attend, but what you witnessed at that meeting was a lot of pent-up energy that had been sort of stored up since 1921 in some cases of, of, about the pressures, you know, about the inability to actually respond to concerns about raising taxes and fees and the like. And we experienced this winter, a number of people on fixed incomes also got an electric bill that was 35 point some odd percent bump from the previous rate. And the frustration there for folks, which is that is, is really onerous, but the frustration for that is there's no outlet in which, and there's no line or no group of people that they can address that, those concerns and outrage for those increases beyond just sort of railing at your electric meter, which is really not very effective. But the fact is that now that the mayor and the council set the rates, there is an opportunity for the public to come and speak to those points, and they certainly did, but that's precisely what we were inviting and that we wanted to do. And, and I applaud your decision in this case, not to rush in this respect. I mean, I think you're right, circumstances have set it up so that we really didn't have enough time for clear vetting and, and possible accommodations of some of these pressures. But it's, I, I want the public to understand that this, with this new order, with having the council and the mayor being in charge, there is the opportunity to make your case and recognize that you are heard and that there has been a reaction and a response. You're not going to get a response from the electric company. They have not responded, other than they've reduced their rates, or the natural gas company and the oil companies are not going to hold things back just because you've expressed concerns. So I, I'm, I'm very grateful for what, your diligence on this and your thoughtfulness in this process, so.
Thank you. And just one other thing sort of popped into my head as you were describing, as you were making that point, and it sort of goes back to what Counselor LaBarge had said. I mean, one of the, one of the reasons why we have water and sewer rates versus paying for it on the tax rate is so that nonprofits pay water and sewer, which, which our largest nonprofits do pay water and sewer. They're not exempt from, from those kinds of, so, I mean, that other matter you were discussing in terms of how it affects these issues, I mean, the nonprofits are paying water and sewer, they are paying stormwater, so.
Right.
And obviously, some people who pay taxes are not also water and sewer users, like many of your residents who are on septic or have wells, they're not part, so it's, it's in some ways mostly the same people, but there's actually a good policy reason for why we have an enterprise fund and for why we use fees so that we're not dependent on subsidizing it through the property tax. So, so anyway, that, yeah, I'm, I, I'm mindful of the issues you raise, and we will, we'll be thinking about those over the next several months as we study different approaches to the rates.
Counselor O'Donnell?
There's, of course, a split possible in property taxes between commercial and residential, which North Hampton, we don't make a distinction there. To your knowledge, is that an option that any city or town uses in terms of?
There are actually, all, there, pretty much, there are lots of, there are many possibilities. And, and so, and some people do use, utilize things like that. The, obviously, the tiering kind of gets to that because it gets to the largest consumers of water in a different way. But, but yeah, there's, there's all kinds of possibilities, just in the short time that I've had a chance to kind of study it. And that's one of the reasons why we want to really work with some folks who have a, who have an expertise at looking at your particular system. I mean, our system may not, may be different from a system where you have a community with, you know, 50% of the users are all large, high-end commercial users versus in our case where we may have, you know, I think we have one user who's like 30%. And, and so, so we have, we have to kind of customize it, but we'll be looking at all those options, definitely.
Yeah, just when I, when I look at my street, it's one of my neighbors, some of my neighbors are humans.
And some of them are Coca-Cola, you know.
Yes.
In my section of Ford III, and certainly.
Yes, indeed.
Corporations are people.
Yes.
Exactly. Don't debate that.
So, yes, so that's, so there's a lot of possibilities. It's, it's less restricted than it is in terms of property tax rates, so we have the ability to be a little more creative.
Okay.
So.
Is there any further discussion?
And I do have, obviously, Mr. Huntley is here as well, and so if you have specific questions for him or anything, he's also here to provide backup if you have any other questions. Obviously, his memo kind of goes into good detail, four pages of, of all the projects that they'll be working on over the next several years, and obviously, you'll be hearing more from the department soon about their asset management plans.
Ned, may I ask you about the sewer treatment plant? That went online in 1979?
Actually, the first, first plant was built in 1956, I think it was. It basically slid drying beds back then, and they went to a more primary process in 1979, then they went to a secondary process in 1996. So it's been a number of years since we've done a lot of work down there. The other thing that's happened over the years is that when the plant was built in 79, there was a lot of federal money available for building plants and cleaning up the rivers in the whole nation. That money's not available anymore. As outlined in my memo, we believe we'll be qualifying for state revolving funds at 2%, which is a pretty good bonding rate for that, rather than typically, you know, between 2.5 to 3.5 to maybe up to 4%. So we think that will help us on that end as far as the wastewater treatment plant goes.
Certainly.
Those funds are available because we will have an approved comprehensive wastewater management plan by the state.
I mean, also, 1979, it's back roughly around the same time we were under the socialist regime of Ronald Reagan, as I recall, so that, when we were actually subsidized projects like this for clean rivers and, and the federal government used to provide for levees and dykes and all the other systems, and that's just me being snarky. The, the, now, when we, we basically, we were able to defer for quite a while, building a water filtration system, and then the EPA standards mandated that we actually had to build something, which is currently the sum of the debt we're paying down up in Williamsburg. You foresee, it seems that you guys are building capacity in anticipation of something similar happening with the sewer treatment plant. Am I reading that right?
We have, we have identified the next five to probably seven years that there's about $30 million worth of which can be done on the sewer system, not just the wastewater treatment plant, but pump stations and so on. You know, we're, we're looking at that and how we move that forward. When the water treatment plant was first designed in 1995, it was estimated to cost $12 million to build. We received a waiver from filtration for a number of years, and finally, we had a consent order from the federal government to build it, and it turned out to be about a $28 million facility when we built it in 2008. So even though we saved money, it costs a lot more, you know, 10 years down the road, 12 years down the road.
That, yeah, that was the nature of my question, that's what I was trying to get at. So, and, and I think it is important that we, we stress that these, these things are, when people say, why do these rates continue to go up, or why do these circumstances go up, it's also in anticipation of these investments that we're going, that we are going to be mandated, and that we actually are morally bound to, to accommodate.
Right. Unless you recall, in 2002, 2003, the water rates went up 22% that year.
Yeah.
Anticipation of borrowing for the water treatment.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further discussion? All those, or is there a motion to send the water and sewer rates forward with the positive recommendation of the full council?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Next, we'll move to the financial order for the Academy of Music.
Thank you.
Fire escape repair project. Upon the recommendation of the mayor, ordered that $12,000 be appropriated in the FY15 general fund, undesignated fund balance, to fund unanticipated costs relating to subsurface drainage, gutters, and pavement for the Academy of Music fire escape repair project.
Hi, counselors. I think I came before you once before to get some additional money for this project. I thought that was going to be the last time, but we, we once again ran into some final snags in the project. Some of you who may have been driving recently on New South Street may have seen the, the area where the new fire escapes are, and you can sort of see that it's all kind of torn up, and there's dirt there, and actually, the poured concrete piers that were, you know, poured into the sonotube are still like above grade. What happened was when they went to do that installation, there was an underground, the gutter system basically had gone into the ground there, and it basically had compromised the soil so badly that when they went to try to pour footings for the, for the fire escape, they ended up having to do a much more in-depth excavation, and they had to figure out a way to reroute the, where the terminus of the downspouts were for the Academy of Music. So the funds that you're approving will help us pay for this sort of reworking of the gutter system and the, where the, where the water will actually terminate. It also pay, is paying for the, sort of finishing the grade of that whole area that's now kind of a, a dirt patch so that we can get it fixed and get it paved properly and get those sonotubes under, under grades so that they're not a trip hazard for people, and it will finally kind of finish off the project once and for all. So that's the purpose of the funds.
Are there any questions for the mayor? Counselor Specter?
I see you're requesting two readings. Could you just explain why?
Well, we'd like to be able to get the work completed. We have a number of shows coming up, and, and people use that side door area quite a bit, and so we're just concerned about people, especially as they come around the building. It's kind of an uneven area.
Okay.
And also, if we start to get significant rainfall, we're concerned about, you know, sort of erosion of that area, because right now, it's kind of still soil and dirt, and it's kind of all exposed. So we, and, you know, and frankly, you know, it's an eyesore, and the academy, we've put so much money into the academy, not we, but, you know, in terms of donations, in terms of state money, and there's been a lot of work to really, you know, make it the gem that it is that, you know, sort of ugly, it's sort of an eyesore to see this last piece of it not finished, so we just want to get it finished.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion, questions? Is there a motion to send this forward with the positive recommendation of the full council? Moved in second, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Is there any new business in finance? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Thank you, Counselor Adams. We now move out of recess and go back into the regular meeting, and we will take the items that you were just, just reviewed in finance, starting with the water and sewer rates for FY2016 revised, and this will be a first reading. I'll accept the motion and put it on the floor, please.
Show motion.
I'll take one of those as a second. So, okay. Any further discussion or any comments on this? Roll call, please.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Specter?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes. That passes in first reading now. Originally, we were talking about scheduling a meeting for April 30th. In discussion with the mayor, that you feel that that's not necessary at this point, that we can go?
Well, my concern at the time was that I have to submit a budget to you by May 15th, that we need to know what the rates will be. So I can proceed, based on tonight's vote, obviously, your next meeting is May 7th, which would only be, you know, eight days prior to when the budget's due. So I can go on a first reading and build the budget from there. You know, I was, initially, I wanted to do it on April 30th, just so that we could have both readings done in the month of April, and then we'd have at least 15 days to finalize the budget. So I, I'm, I'll, I'm open to whatever the council wishes to do.
Counselor Specter?
I think, given the nature of the vote and that it was unanimous, I think you could pretty well rest assured that we don't need that meeting, and you can build your budget based on that vote. I mean, we could have a huge earthquake or something could happen in a water.
Okay.
I would, I would encourage you.
Order again. Counselor LaBarge, Counselor Carney?
Just a question, I mean, not an earthquake, but a quorum issue, if there's, I know I may not be here on the 7th, and if we do need a two-thirds, we need six votes in order to pass the financial order, is there, is there a question about the?
Well, that's a good point. I don't, I haven't heard from any of other counselors suggesting that they might not be here. Should it come to that, I will contact, and we can do a remote participation.
Okay.
Or we could call a special meeting a few days after.
We didn't get to do a remote participation, we're just aching to do that. So should it come to that, we can, we can certainly invoke that.
Although, remote participation wouldn't help your quorum issue, if you had a quorum issue.
Yeah. For Counselor, we could call, if we don't have a quorum that Thursday, we could call another meeting early the next week, a special meeting. I just don't see the necessity right now, I don't think, unless other counselors here now are claiming not to be here.
As long as I get a sense of the council, that this is fine.
Or other counselors not going to be here, or know they're not going to be here on that May 7th meeting.
I can't guarantee it.
The only other option would be to do two readings, but that's your, that's your.
But the reason I would, I would actually, I don't see a problem with doing two readings for a number of reasons, especially if the rate, it's not as though there's an increase that we're talking about. We're talking about a freeze. It seems that it might not be inappropriate to do two readings tonight, given that it's not a substantial change. In fact, it's no change.
So are you putting that as a motion?
Yes, I'd make a motion that we amend council rules to do two readings tonight.
All right, so there's a motion to suspend rules for the second reading and second it. And as to the discussion part, the only... And as to the discussion part, the only thing that makes me slightly anxious is we're missing a member tonight, who might be opposed, who might invoke minority reconsideration, say. But, so there's, there's, that, I, I'm not going to presume anything on Counselor Murphy's vote on this issue, although I've not heard from him one way or another on this, so I don't know. That's my only concern, but that, that's also the nature of missing a meeting.
I think what Counselor Carney proposes makes less sense to one part of me, and the other part of me thinks it's the first time we're voting to, voting on these rates at all. So, and I actually, I actually think there's kind of a slim chance that we won't have the required councillors at a meeting, and so I, I respect the position. I think, I feel differently, but whatever the council decides.
Any further discussion on the motion to suspend rules? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? Okay, passes. Whereas, I'll take, accept the motion on second.
Move second reading.
Motion's made in second on second reading. Any further discussion on setting the sewer and water rates? Roll call, please. This is a second reading.
Counselor LeBard.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Spector.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
That passes in second reading, and the rates for water and sewer are set for twenty sixteen. Next up is the financial order for the Academy of Music fire escape repair project, and as you heard, there was a request for two readings. Is there, accept the motion? There's a motion made. Is it seconded? Okay. Any further discussion on this item? This is like pulling a thread on a sweater, this project, but, uh, no further discussion. Roll call, please.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Spector.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor LeBard.
Yes.
Move to suspend rules for two readings?
Motion's made and seconded to suspend rules. And discussion on the suspension of rules. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Accept the motion?
Move second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call in second reading for the fire escape funds.
Counselor Shara. Counselor Spector.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBard.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
That passes in second reading. Those approved. You'll notice item C on your agenda, we've already done, so we knocked that off. We're up to the financial order. This is second reading for the appropriation of twenty thousand five hundred dollars from the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund to fund a conservation plan for the Bridge Street Cemetery.
Move second reading.
Motion's made in second. Any further discussion on this? This is, as you recall, to improve the fence and do, in effect, some repairs in, over and above the CPC funding for this project. The fence? No offense or no fence?
This isn't the fence project. This is the, this is the planning process.
The planning process. My bet. Okay. I'm, no, no offense.
I'm sure, but.
No offense taken, so it's, okay. So, yeah, Fred killed the fence. Any further discussion? Fred killed the fence. Uh, roll call, please.
Counselor Spector.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBard.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And now, we come to the ordinance pertaining to the ban of single-use plastic bags. And I will, ah, I'm going to read the order, but now it's sideways.
That's actually been deleted. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. Counselor Adams happens to have a copy. This is an ordinance to the city of Northampton. Actually, doesn't have the sponsors listed here. Oh, there they are. This is upon the recommendation of Counselor Jesse M. Adams and Counselor Paul D. Spector, and the youth camp, the Northampton Youth Committee. And be ordained by the City Council of the city of Northampton, and the city council assembled as follows. Section one, that section two, chapter two seventy-eight dash eighteen of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Northampton, Massachusetts be amended so that such section shall read as follows. Environmental protection and solid waste reduction be ordained as follows. Section one, general definitions. One point one, compostable packaging shall mean packing that is made of materials that conforms to the current American Society for Testing Materials International, D six four hundred for compostability. One point two, biodegradable packaging shall mean packaging other than plastic or styrofoam which composts into beneficial breakdown components. One point three, recyclable, recyclable material that can be sorted, cleansed, and reconstituted using available recycling collection programs for the purpose of using the altered form in the manufacture of the new product. Recycling does not include burning, incinerating, converting, or otherwise thermally destroying solid waste. One point four, retail establishment shall mean all sales outlets, stores, shops, pharmacies, or other places of businesses, you know, business located within the city of Northampton which sell or convey merchandise directly to the ultimate customer. One point five, retail food establishment shall mean all sales, excuse me, all sales outlets, stores, shops, restaurants, markets, supermarkets, clubs, or other places of business which sell, serve, or convey food directly to the ultimate consumer. And this definition shall include, but is not limited to, any place where food is prepared, mixed, cooked, baked, smoked, preserved, bottled, packaged, handled, stored, manufactured, sold, or offered to the public, similar places in which food or drink is prepared for sale or service on the premises or elsewhere, and any other establishment or operation, including in-home caterers where food is processed, prepared, stored, or provided for the public regardless of whether there's a charge for the food. One point six, retail service establishments shall mean all places of business located within the city of Northampton where a service, specialized, or professional work is offered to the public regardless of whether there's a charge for the service. And one point seven, merchandise shall mean products that are purchased in the retail stores. An ASTM shall mean a standard developed by the American Society for Testing Materials. Section two, shopping bag definitions, and these are actually probably more relevant. This is the thin film, single-use plastic bags. Are bags with a thickness of three point zero mils or less, and are intended for single-use transport of purchased products. Two point two, biodegradable bags are bags that, one, contain no polymers derived from fossil fuels, and, two, is intended for single use and will decompose in a natural setting to environmentally beneficial material at a rate comparable to other biodegradable materials such as paper, leaves, and food waste. And two point three, reusable bags are bags that have a thickness greater than three point zero mils, and is specifically designed for multiple use, and is made of thick recyclable plastic cloth, fabric, or other durable materials that do not decompose into harmful chemical components. A reusable bag may, I believe, be recyclable or compostable, and is specifically designed and manufactured for multiple use, reuse. Two point four, compostable plastic bags are plastic bags that, one, conform to the current American Society for Testing Materials International for compostability, two, is certified and labeled as meeting the ASTMD six four hundred standard specification by a recognized verification entity, and, three, conforms to any other standards deemed acceptable by this section. Section three, general prohibition and regulation. Three point one, no retail establishment, retail food establishment, or retail service establishment as defined in sections one point four, one point five, and one point six respectively, shall sell or convey merchandise to ultimate customers in thin film, single-use plastic bags, and shall only use such bags that are, one, reusable, or, two, biodegradable bags, or, three, compostable plastic bags. Section four, these are the exemptions. Section three of this regulation shall not apply to the following items. Four point one, thin film plastic bags used to contain dry cleaning, newspapers, produce, meat, bulk foods, wet items, and other similar merchandise typically without handles. Four point two, any flexible, transparent covering for uncooked or raw meat, poultry, raw fish, hard cheese, cold cuts, fruit, and vegetable products, baked goods, or bread. And then we come up to section five, the penalties enforcement. Five point one, if it is determined that a violation of any section of this ordinance has occurred, the health department or the mayor's designee shall issue a warning notice for the initial violation. Five point two, if an additional violation of this ordinance has occurred within one year after a warning notice has been issued for the initial violation, the health department or the mayor's designee shall issue a notice of violation and shall impose a penalty against the retail establishment. Five point three, the penalty for each violation that occurs after the issuance of the warning notice shall be no more than, one, fifty dollars for the first offense, two, one hundred dollars for the second offense, and all subsequent offenses. Payment shall be made within twenty-one days to the city clerk. Non-payment of such fines may be enforced through civil action in the Northampton District Court, and no more than one penalty shall be imposed upon a retail establishment within a seven calendar day period. Five point four, violators shall have twenty-one calendar days after the date that a notice of the violation is issued to pay the penalty. Section six, date of effect. This ordinance will take effect on January first, twenty sixteen. Section seven, hardship deferments. Upon a written application, the health department or the mayor's designee after a public hearing may defer application of any section of this ordinance for a six-month period after the effective date stated in section six of this ordinance upon a showing of hardship. Hardship will be found when, one, compliance with any section of this ordinance would cause significant economic difficulty, two, there is no readily available compliant substitute. Seven point two, any entity granted a deferment by the health department or the mayor's designee must reapply prior to the end of the six-month exemption period, and demonstrate continued undue hardship if it wishes to have a deferment extended. Deferments may only be granted for intervals not to exceed six months. Seven point three, a deferment granted in accordance with this section may be extended no more than two additional six-month periods upon written application to the health department or the mayor's designee, at least two months prior to the expiration of the prior deferment period, and upon showing that the circumstances justifying the deferment continue to exist. Seven point four, a deferment application shall include all information necessary health department, for, necessary for the health department to make its decision, including, but not limited to, documentation showing the factual support for the claimed deferment. The health department or the mayor's designee may require the applicant to provide additional information to permit it to determine the facts regarding the deferment application. Seven point five, the health department or the mayor's designee may approve the deferment application in whole or in part, with or without conditions that deems necessary to protect the environment and public health and further the interests of this ordinance. Seven point six, deferment decisions are effectively, are effective immediately and final. Section eight, severability and ordinance numbering. Any word, term, or section deemed illegal for any reason may be severed from this ordinance without affecting the viability of the whole. The remaining sections in Article Two, Integrated Solid Waste Management, shall be renumbered to two seventy-two dash nineteen through two seventy-two dash twenty-three. I'll accept the motion. Motion's made, and seconded. Counselor Spector.
I want to thank.
Put that in English?
Yeah. I'm going to put that in English. I want to thank Counselor Adams, who's a lawyer, who, we have to put it in that kind of language, but if anyone is still awake who's watching after that reading, let me try and simplify this. It's a single-use plastic bag ban, and that basically means that when you go to the cash register at one of our grocery stores, I'll use this as an example, and you're at the cash register, when it used to be asked, do you want paper or plastic, it will now be paper, or a very thick, reusable bag that might be made out of plastic. That's basically what the ban is about. People have asked, what about, you know, produce? Well, it was right in there, it probably slipped by, but if it's interior in the store, if you're going to Stop &amp; Shop, say, I'm not pushing Stop &amp; Shop, but if you have to go there, and you go to the produce section, there are very thin plastic bags. Those are not banned under this ordinance. So, that's essentially what the ordinance is. There were a couple of other things, and Counselor Adams, if I missed a few of these, toward the end, a lot of the things about if there is hardship. So, we tried to write this ordinance so that if there are not substitutes that are readily available, we're saying, look, we're going to take that into account. So, that's why we talked about things like the newspapers, which are in the thin plastic bags, but that would really be a hardship. There is not a substitute that wouldn't dramatically change the commercial operation of already a struggling business, which are local newspapers. Or there is in the exemption for dry cleaners. There is not an easy substitute right now, so that's why those are, are not included in the ban. So, we tried to make this, and that, we'd also include deferments, that if somebody feels that this ban creates an economic hardship, we were trying to write in this, you heard, a number of ways in which they can request deferments. We think we've been very liberal in that policy. So, essentially, it's that point of sale, when you go to the cash register, that those bags will be banned. And before I go on, Counselor Adams, do you have anything else you'd want to add to what kind of the commonplace language of that ordinance would be?
No, you've hit the major points. You can go ahead.
You sit on the floor if you want to.
Okay, so I'll take the floor to just kind of say, well, where did this come from, and why are we doing it? And I said in the public forum we had on this, that we were often the, one of the leaders in environmental ordinances, and we've kind of taken pride in that. We actually are not a leader on this one anymore. This is not something that's radical. And about five years ago, the idea of this came up, and at that time, even I was like, I don't know if we're ready to do this. And now, we're kind of like, we're kind of just joining the parade. So, if you'll see, I passed out for all the councillors some of my talking points here, but right now, we have the European Union, three hundred and forty million people, there's a ban on single-use plastic bags. China, a billion people, China not a particularly environmentally progressive country, has banned the use of single-use plastic bags. Mexico City, forty other countries, the state of California last summer banned the use of single-use plastic bags. Many communities in Massachusetts have now banned them. The state legislature, it's been sitting in committee for a couple of years, and I've been assured that it's going to be moving, so we're looking at it, at this eventually, that the whole state will ban this. And my guess would be in five or ten years, we're going to probably see the whole country will be banning this. Even the state of Texas, right now, has a ban that has already moved out of committee and is moving forward in the state of Texas. And then the question is, well, why? Why are we, why is this happening? Well, one of the reasons it's happening, and I think one of the most startling statistics, is just the number of these bags and what happens to them. And when we use these bags, unlike a lot of things that many of us have become kind of like, okay, we can recycle that, these bags are recycled at an incredibly low rate. Some folks say two or three percent, I'm going to be generous and say about five percent. And the reason, and this is even with the manufacturers of the bags putting a ton of money into recycling programs, especially, they tried this in California, because they were trying to say, look, people are recycling the ban. So, they put a lot of money, a lot of time, when they looked down the road a few years ago and said, hey, California may ban this, they tried to say, well, we're going to show you these bags can be recycled. It still didn't change anything. Okay, so then the question is, well, if they're not being recycled, what happens? Well, what happens is that these billions of bags end up all over the place. Yeah, a lot of them end up in a landfill, but that's even costly for communities. You just heard that we're going to start, we are shipping our, our stuff up to New York State, because now we're going to be closing the landfill. Well, guess what? We start shipping that with millions of bags, and the city of Northampton, and this was, when I heard this figure a few years ago, I said, could this possibly be true? And when I found out it was, I said, now the magnitude of the problem really hits home. The city of Northampton uses approximately, the citizens here use approximately twelve to fifteen million single-use plastic bags a year, the thin bags. And so, we're going to be paying for that. That's something we're paying for. It's going to increase cost of when we ship this stuff out of state. It's going to increase cost of when we ship this stuff out of state. In addition to that, when these items—and you've probably seen them—I got one call out of all the scores of calls I've got, all in support. I did have one call, which I was kind of glad about, it was a good call, of somebody who was saying, "I oppose this," that was just yesterday. I happened to be on a bike ride, and he was saying, "I don't see why we're doing that. I never see these bags anywhere." And as I'm riding along, and I'm looking down, there are single-use plastic bags. And I actually looked up in a tree, and I saw a single-use plastic bag. And I think everybody's had that experience. So these bags are everywhere. Unfortunately, one of the places they end up, and one of the most environmentally damaging places they end up, are in our water. And they are not only in our fresh water, but especially in the oceans, where they biodegrade, but they don't complete—they don't really biodegrade. They break down into small, incredibly small, plastic particles, which end up in marine life. And that's why both the UN and our own—I haven't found here the name—that the UN Ocean Protection Council called—and the UN Environmental Secretariat have called for a worldwide ban on these, is mostly because of what happens in the oceans. So not only are they filling our landfill, are they costly, they're environmentally really damaging. And the fact—and one other statistic—that just in the city of Northampton, so we talk about carbon footprint, the use of these bags—I think my math is right—if you translate it, our use of these bags is the equivalent of us driving 600,000 miles in a car. That's how much petroleum it takes just for our city. So if we're looking—and we, as a city, have very much been a leader in looking at climate change, what we can do, what we can do to mitigate it, preparing for it, and also what we can do to lower our carbon footprint. And this is one way we can do it. Its time has come. There are—this is something that years ago, when these plastic bags were first introduced, the folks producing these actually had to do a real marketing campaign because nobody wanted them. Nobody wanted to use the plastic bag. Everybody—remember what—we all used paper? Do you remember when in the big supermarkets, especially, all of them, when they'd say, "Plastic or paper?", "Paper or plastic"? You'll notice in the last few years, they don't even ask you anymore. The default is plastic, and you have to ask for the paper. What has happened in communities that start to do things like ban the single-use plastic bags is that it also encourages what we all really need to do, which is start bringing our own bags. And the supermarket then saves money. Because don't forget, when we use these bags, whether they're paper or plastic, that cost gets translated back to us. They're not free bags. We pay for it in the operation of that store and the increased cost of our food. So as more and more of us start to bring our own bags, which they've at Stop &amp; Shop, when they experimented and encouraged people to do that four years ago, the use rate was almost 40 percent. And they only did that for a little bit of time. So you heard one of our local store owners tonight speak in public session that they haven't used plastic bags at all, and we've got—most of our local grocery stores have already—already leading the way, and they're doing just fine by not using the single-use plastic bags. So I hope everybody will support this tonight.
Counselor Adams?
The only thing that I would add is I think this is a major legislative accomplishment. I'm very proud. This is a council-driven initiative, and Counselor Spector and I spent well over a year with this, and it was—it was a huge, huge, and long and tedious effort for us to research this and draft it, and reach out to the public, and hear back, and make concessions and amendments. And I think it was a good process, and I think that this will go a long way to—to demonstrate our commitment to environmental protection, solid waste reduction, and sustainability, and take part in this global effort.
Counselor Clinton?
Well, I'm really thrilled that this is being introduced. I think it's a very important piece of legislation, so thank you to the counselors. This has been a real kind of passionate—passion issue for me because I serve as a volunteer for the Western Massachusetts Bag Share Project, which is a project that sews reusable cloth bags and distributes them among stores, local stores, for use. People take them home with their groceries—to hold their groceries—and then bring them back to the store so that they're in constant use. Serios, Cornucopia, Florence Hardware, a number of stores in Northampton and Florence are working with the Bag Share Project. And in fact, we have calculated in the last five years, we've kept 6 million plastic and paper bags out of our landfill and local waste streams locally with the Bag Share Project. And I just want to add to some of the statistics that we use in the Bag Share Project to what Counselor Spector shared. Let's see, so as of the end of 2014, 132 cities and counties in 18 states and the District of Columbia have instituted similar measures to this one. But as Counselor Spector said, the European Union, China, India, dozens of other nations have already banned plastic bags, or they have taxes in place. Annually around the world, we consume 1 trillion plastic bags, and only 3.5 of them are recycled, as Counselor Spector alluded to. In Northampton, the percentage is a little higher. We've calculated that only about 5 percent of plastic bags are recycled. It's a little higher than the national average, but it's not much higher. As Counselor Spector also alluded to, plastic bags can take up to 1,000 years to decompose, and in the process, they release toxins into the soil and water. In every square mile of ocean, there are 46,000 pieces of floating plastic, and sea turtles are killed at alarming rates. They eat only jellyfish, and they think plastic bags are jellyfish, and they consume them and die. In one study that was done at the national level in the United States, 90 percent of birds were found to have small pieces of plastic in their—in their stomachs, in their bodies. And something else that Counselor Spector started to speak about was that another reason for banning plastic bags is their fossil fuel burden. Plastic is not only made from petroleum, but also in the process of creating the bags, petroleum is used. It's a fossil fuel-derived energy that creates the the plastic bags. And the production of plastic bag uses 10 percent of the world's oil supply, and that's 12 million barrels of oil a year. And then I just want to talk about the the waste reduction piece. A plastic bag tax that was started in Ireland, they did a study after 10 years. It was started in 2002. In 2012, they found that it led to a 95 percent reduction in plastic bag litter in all over Ireland. A study in San Jose, California, where they instituted a ban in 2011, found that plastic litter reduction—there was a reduction of approximately 89 percent in its storm drain system, 60 percent reduction in its creeks and rivers, and 59 percent reduction of plastics in city streets and neighborhoods. So actually, creating these bans keeps all of this out of our waste streams, out of our—off our streets, out of our rivers, all of that. And just another to finish up here, the Bag Share Project that I work with has also figured out that in the lifetime of a reusable cloth bag, like the ones that we sew in the Western Massachusetts Bag Share Project, will supplant the use of an average of, excuse me, over 400 plastic bags. So I also just want to encourage people to take a look and to volunteer. We do a monthly Bag Share project sew at my house, and I invite people to call and come and sew with us. And you can look at www.thebagshare.org to get more information and to participate in their sewing circles all around Western Massachusetts. So I thank you both, Counselors Spector and Adams, and I will support this.
At this time, before further comments, I'm just going to introduce a couple of letters that were sent for the public record.
Sure.
This is, "Dear Council, we strongly endorse the bag ordinance. We cannot be present in person, so please read the attached letter into the record of the council meeting." And then, of course, I don't have the attachment. Jesus.
I have it. Bill, do you want me to—
Do you have the attachment?
Yeah.
Would you be so kind as to read it?
Do you have another one to read in the meantime while I pull it up?
Yeah, I have—I have the the Stop &amp; Shop one, so yeah. I'll read the Stop—this one. This is dated April 7th, 2015. "And dear members of the City Council of Northampton, my name is Joni Martino. I'm Stop &amp; Shop Store Manager at 228 King Street. On behalf of the Stop &amp; Shop Supermarket Company, LLC, we have concerns with ordinance 272-18, the proposal to ban the use of carryout plastic bags. Stop &amp; Shop is strongly committed to being a sustainable company and protecting the environment. We strongly believe that educating and encouraging our customers to recycle is the best solution to aid in the protection of the environment, and we know that promoting the proper disposal in recycling materials is important. We encourage our customers to use reusable bags. Reusability reduces both plastic and paper bag usage. Recently, Stop &amp; Shop has introduced a new economical plastic reusable bag option for our customers. It retails for only 10 cents each. It is 100 percent recyclable and is 2.5 mils thick. It has a reusability rate of 8 to 12 on the average. We have a program in place—we have programs in place to recycle plastic bags in corrugated cardboard boxes." There's a bullet point. All four—all of our 400-plus stores, including the 131 stores in Massachusetts, accept plastic bags from consumers for recycling. Counselor Spector referred to this. We have collection bins in the front of each store, which collect thousands of pounds of plastic bags each year. The plastic bags are sent to a recycling vendor, where they're recycled into composite lumber and other recycled commodities. And more than 50 percent—and this is the other bullet point—more than 50 percent of cardboard, paper, plastic, and other waste is recycled from our stores. We have a program in place that recycles old shrink wrap and corrugated boxes from our stores and distribution center. Also, Stop &amp; Shop is a leader in innovating and building sustainable operations to our—to lower our environmental impact in each market we serve. Some more bullet points. New stores are built to reduce their energy consumption by 20 percent. We have 230 stores that meet the Energy Star criteria by EPA. Stop &amp; Shop and its sister companies underneath Ahold—really? USA—hold the distinction of operating the largest fleet of LEED-certified grocery stores in the U.S. Several stores utilize solar panels, which generate around 8 percent of the store's electricity needs, and we continue to expand their use into new stores. And one of our newest stores in Whalen, Mass. features electric vehicle charging stations. We oppose an adoption of this proposal and would like to partner with the town of Northampton—city of Northampton—to educate and promote recycling in the town. Thank you for the opportunity to submit this testimony respectfully, Joni Martino.
May I speak directly to that letter before you read the next one?
Why don't I—why don't I do this one, too? And then you can speak to them all in the hall.
Okay. I just don't want people to forget some of what you read in that letter, and I'm going to even forget it. You have the letter. You might have to pass it back.
I appear to refresh it, so—
Okay.
And this is the letter—this is from the Sierra Club. "Dear councilors, the Massachusetts chapter of the Sierra Club commends the efforts of the council to restrict the use of single-use polyethylene bags. Plastic bags are one important part of the effort to reduce unnecessary plastic waste. The Massachusetts Sierra Club endorses ordinance 272-18 as currently written. In particular, we recommend three mils as the cutoff reusable bags, and are pleased that the city is joining with its sister cities of Newburyport, Newton, and most recently, Cambridge in adopting this strong definition. Northampton residents use an estimated of 750,000 polyethylene shopping bags per month. Only 5 percent are recycled. Eliminating bags from the waste stream will be a significant positive environmental action. Eliminating non-biodegradable packaging will also beautify the city of Northampton by reducing the unsightly and ultimately permanent [inaudible] plastic bags of cost. The ordinance allows alternatives that are highly reusable and/or made of natural, biodegradable, and renewable materials. This move to better packaging will enhance the sustainability of Northampton retailers. We believe the city is allowing adequate time to make the transition to these readily available alternatives. This transition is getting easier and faster, especially for the large chain stores that account for the vast majority of existing thin plastic bags, since similar laws are being successfully implemented in a growing number of communities across the Commonwealth and across around the country. We hope they will make the changes—the change as soon as possible. We also urge supermarkets in the city to maintain polyethylene bag recycling as long as they distribute other recyclable bags, such as produce bags and bread bags. Such programs have been maintained in other communities that have adopted similar laws. We ask you to vote in favor of this ordinance respectfully, Emily Norton, the Sierra Club Chapter Director." Counselor Spector?
If—I could I have a copy of—I can't—
Which one do you want?
The Stop &amp; Shop letter. But as Counselor Dwight—
I don't have a copy. I've got an electronic copy.
Okay, I'll try and remember from it.
See if I can pull it up.
It ties into something else. Counselor Adams, I think it was a year and a half ago, we started on this ordinance, and when we began, we thought—at that time, there was another process moving forward, and that was about the the need for stormwater. And we watched that process, which took a long time, and educated the public, and we thought, you know, whether you agreed with the final need for the stormwater fee or not, I think everyone would agree that we had a great deal of publicity about it, a kind of education process. And we said, "That's a model for us. We really want to reach out. We want to try and especially reach out to"—we actually sat there and had meetings, saying, "Who might object to this and why? And we should talk to them and find out how we can work together." We reached out to all the big supermarkets here in multiple ways, both with phone calls. I went there personally. Nobody talked to us. We left messages. Nobody called us back. It's a little—this letter actually came to me the day of the public forum, which was last week. That was a year and a half ago, and it was multiple times, not a single time. Because I'd call Counselor Adams, and I said, "Well, have you heard back from so-and-so?" And he'd say, "No." So I would try and call. We also reached out to the chamber, and we thought, "Well, if we reach out to the Chamber of Commerce and the Economic Development Committee"—so I called Suzanne Beck, and she was, you know, very helpful. I said, "Look, we want to work with businesses in the community. We want to find out, you know, because this might affect them, although all of our research showed that it has a minimal effect, that there are—there are substitutes." And as Counselor Adams alluded to, the couple of businesses, local businesses, that called us, who had concerns, and they raised them, we actually dropped parts of a much bigger ordinance because we said, "You know what? They're right. This might be onerous right now. There aren't substitutes for some of the other things that we were going to include in the ordinance." And so we really looked at the economic impact. And the—from the chamber, we actually—I went, and I met with the Economic Development Committee of the Chamber, who was very supportive, and I said, "Look, do you think you could reach out, especially to the big supermarkets, who are the ones who use the most of these single-use plastic bags, and who historically, as we watch other communities, have been the ones who write letters like these or object?" We said—this was eight months ago, maybe a year ago. "Could you set up a meeting, and we'd like to come and talk to them and explain what we're doing, and have a conversation about it?" Back in the fall, I—I had to be the one who called again to the chamber and say, "Well, what's happening with the meeting?" And they said, "Well, we've reached out to the businesses, and we're going to have a meeting, but they don't want you to come." So I find this letter rather ingenuous, because we were willing to discuss this. And embedded in that letter, one place, which is the Stop &amp; Shop talks about their recycling. And this is where it's a little bit tricky with their language. They—they talk about how good they are at recycling, and they talk about recycling 50 percent of cardboard, plastic, other waste is recycled from our stores, which is fantastic. I'm so glad they do that. Notice that they give you no percent of what they recycle in terms of plastic bags, and the reason is, even if they're doing incredibly well, even if they're doing better than any place in the country has ever done, I guarantee you, that is way under 10 percent. And so the fact is, they're not recycled. I'm glad they're doing these other things, but they realize that this is a product that they're being—that they're using that has easy substitutes. When they talk about going to reusable bags, all the research shows this will help them to do it. Their own experiment at their own store in Northampton showed that when they put just a little bit of effort into encouraging people to bring reusable bags, cloth bags, like the counselor talked about, that this town responds incredibly, in the long run, saves them a lot of money. So that's what I just wanted to say about our outreach, and we have tried to do outreach all year in multiple ways. So I did have—in the same call of the one call that was opposed, they said, "Well, I didn't—I haven't heard anything about this. This process—this shouldn't vote on this tonight because the process—"you know, I said, "Wait a minute. This is—there have been two or three articles just in the Gazette alone. There was an editorial on the Gazette. There's been at least two or three times, there have been stories on the radio, and I believe Counselor Adams was at the radio. We've had public forums. We've reached out to every one of the committees and sent emails, and reached out for over a year and a half." So if folks haven't heard about it, they probably also don't know that the Red Sox season has started again, so.
Counselor Shara?
I want to thank you both for this labor of love and all the work and time you've put into it. And kind of along these lines, I watched how much work you put into and concern about particularly small local businesses. And—and actually, in this time period, one of the smaller businesses that—that And actually, in this time period, one of the small businesses that we were concerned about, Cereals, has leapfrogged over this.
Yeah.
And now has no bags, except for Bag Share bags, has gotten rid of their Styrofoam, has gotten rid of all of that kind of packaging. So this is very possible for businesses to do this, and I hope that we are all moving in the direction that Cereals, the initiative that they've already taken upon them.
Counselor Klein.
Well, just to follow up on the point about retailers that are not able to withstand this situation, it's really interesting because I think, let me see, I have statistics for the U.S. In the United States, retailers spend at least $4 billion a year on plastic bags, and they purchase over $380 billion plastic bags. So that if in a small city like Northampton, where we have access to something like the Bag Share project, to all kinds of alternatives, people that bring their own bags fairly regularly, it's actually, it will save retailers money. It will be a boon to retailers. It's just a matter of, I think, shifting kind of consciousness of how we sell things, how people leave their homes to go shopping. And all of those things are doable. And in fact, you know, we have all of these models of other cities, other countries, the entire European Union that have done it successfully. So I think that we have some really good models for how it can be done.
Counselor LeBarre.
Thank you. I want to thank both of you, Councillors, and Counselor Specter for giving us such a great detail on the ordinance. I've had some people who did call me and wanted to know what the purpose of this was. I support this 100%. To me, it's almost what we went through with the landfill, with the expansion over the Barnes-Aquifer protecting the wall. I agree with you about the plastic bags. They're ridiculous. And so many of my friends and so many people I know in the city said it would be the greatest thing that we get rid of them. And I have to agree with that also. And I like the idea of the group that the counselor was talking about sewing bags and so forth. I will support this.
I should, first of all, mention that some of the objections that I've heard, first of all, I'll preface by saying I'm in full support of it. As they've been shepherding this through. There have been some concerns expressed. One was expressed by a business owner in Thorns, who you heard at the meeting, which was that it would put him at a competitive disadvantage, although in further discussion with him afterwards, because he says he buys his bags in bulk upfront and a surplus system, and they're very cheap, that he would have to start, he would have to raise his prices accordingly. But as I pointed out, and he thought that that would drive customers to surrounding communities where a ban does not exist. And by the way, the Stop &amp; Shop letter, while expressing that they were opposed, I never heard anything substantive that spoke about their objection. It was weird. They just listed everything that they did, all the good things that they do, that I hope they continue to do, but it didn't say why this would be onerous or why they would object. It's just simply that they did object. That was, that kind of struck me. But this particular gentleman was speaking of legitimate concern. He's an established business here in the community. My point then was, I said, I'm not sure about the difference in the increase in the concern that it would drive your customers away. But I have to believe that per purchase, we're talking about in the area of about a penny at the most. And while there are a lot of discerning shoppers in the area, I don't think people make their shopping decision predicated on that cent, on that penny. That that penny, if they drove to another community, would be a lot bigger in fuel costs alone and just to try and save that cent. He allowed that, he accepted that. But the fact is, he just felt that, he just had a general bad feeling about it, and I thought that it was appropriate to share that. The discussion, beyond that, the discussion has been, to virtually everyone, the exception of few citizens, been the support that you've heard reflected tonight. There were some concerns that I raised with Counselor Specter. There are a number of people who, senior citizens in particular, who express some concern because they rely on the plastic bags when they walk to the store and walk back because of it's raining or it's inclement, that the paper bags would tear, and it's difficult for them to carry those. And I think you were going to do some follow-up at the Council on Aging, and I was wondering if you had any response.
Well, one of the things with Council on Aging is, and I spoke to them, is to try and, I didn't know you were involved in their group, but to have a program of getting seniors reusable bags, which are so much sturdier than even the plastic. Because I don't know if anyone here has had like eight of those. I mean, they seem to, you come out with like 12 plastic bags. They're not easy to juggle, but to have really sturdy reusable bags like you guys are providing. So I'm going to follow up and talk to the, you know, Council on Aging and see how can we somehow help people get those bags and provide them with the bags.
I suspect that the absence of objection doesn't necessarily mean it doesn't exist out there. As you discovered, when somebody says, this is the first I have heard of it, and you're rushing it through.
Right.
This is, I should point out, Counselor Specter is right, this is nowhere near rushing anything. And this is the, in fact, actually, some people look at this as the slow grind of municipal law. But implementation will certainly bring some objections. I think you'll start to hear people who might not otherwise pay attention to the news, who go into Cumberland Farms and are used to getting their stuff, and then they say, I'm sorry, we don't have a plastic bag for you. Then you're going to start to hear some stuff about that, and I'm sure you've anticipated that as a possibility.
So one objection, since you're raising somewhere, it wasn't an objection but a concern, one group are dog owners, because dog owners use a lot of these bags. And I just want to clarify, because when I explain to them, well, they can still buy their own roll of these very thin bags, which are very cheap, for use with their dogs to pick up the waste. So they were concerned that all of these, you know, you couldn't even buy these bags, and that is not the case. So I just wanted to clarify that. That's the other group. I've heard some objection or some concern. I wouldn't even say these folks objected to it. They said, so what am I going to use?
I recommend they subscribe to the local paper, the paper record, and that they will get a plastic bag with each delivery, and that they will have an opportunity to be edified and find out, get up to speed on these items, and then also have.
That's right.
An additional bag to pick up after their dogs.
Let me just emphasize, I'd say something I've heard a number of times is, well, more, and this was even true, so I was kind of prepared with all of my talking points. These were, when I went to the Chamber's Economic Development Committee, because I thought they were going to object or have strong objections and question. They were like, why aren't you including the newspaper, the plastic that the newspapers come in? Why aren't you including the cleaning, the cleaning bags? And I tried to explain that to the economic chamber group, that it was economically onerous, that we were not trying to create a situation, there aren't substitutes, there really aren't today, for the plastic round paper. And you could say, well, we should reinstitute, remember when we were growing up, they're paper boys, and they don't exist anymore. And so if the paper's going to be out there, it's very difficult to run the business without doing that. Hopefully, in a few years, that will change, and there'll be a bag for that. But we actually, that was more objections about we're not doing enough than the very few objections or concerns about the ban itself.
And the last thing I would point out, and I think it's mentioned, that currently is percolating in the state, the legislature is a statewide ban. It's going to advantage, although I don't know if we can actually translate that to people who might think differently, but this actually prepares Northampton to, and businesses and the community, to be ahead of the curve when it seems likely the statewide ban takes effect. Then that competing interest falls away, and that, but we'll be far ahead of that. We'll have our reusable bags and our sewn bags well in place by the time the statewide ban comes through. Anyone else have any comments or thoughts on this? Counselor Adams.
A couple of things based on Scrivener's errors.
Okay. Yeah, there's some Scrivener's errors, just some omissions that you want us to add on the language. Hit it.
Section 2.3, last sentence. A reusable bag may be, word "be" is left out, if we could add that, please. First line. After all information necessary, left out for the Health Department. Words "for the" should be between necessary and health. Then right after that, Health Department, right after Department should be, or Mayor's designate. And then in 7.5, Mayor's designate should be a capital D.
So I'm just wondering about in 5.3 and 5.4, you reiterate, it says, payment shall be made within 21 days to the city clerk in 5.3, and then 5.4, I mean, it's a different way of saying it, but you're saying the same thing. Violator shall have 21 calendar days. What happened?
Yeah.
After the date that a notice of violation is issued to pay the penalty?
Just delete 5.4.
I mean, maybe you want to make it clear and take it out of 5.3 and then, just because it, no.
Delete 5.4.
Why is it doing that?
Well, first of all, those are by the proponent, those corrections are by the proponent. So I don't think it requires a vote. There's Scrivener's errors. Counselor Specter?
I just thank someone who's here tonight, Jessica Tanner, because she did a good deal of grunt work for me especially. She called me up, she's very interested in this, and helped us move this along in terms of some of the technical issues, including the mil size of the bags. So I want to just thank her for her help.
And Jessica, I could have used your help moving that plastic bag ball through that Counselor Specter and I ended up hauling all around town. All right. All right. So there are no further debate or discussion? Okay. Roll call, please.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarre.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Specter.
Yes.
Well, that passes in first reading, and next reading will come up.
Eight to zero.
Our first council meeting in May. Next up, we have an ordinance pertaining to campaign, well, we're going to strike, it says spending, but we're going to make contributions. Changing the language to say ordinance pertaining to campaign contribution limits. And that was returned from the Committee on Rules, Orders, and Orders Without Recommendation. This is the first reading. And actually, here, let me give you the language on that. My computer doesn't crash. Come on. Come on, do it. Come on. Pam, do you have a paper copy? The link's not coming. The theme of the night has been the waste stream, but now this is the funding stream, and we have actually, these are both, the ordinance that we've been dealing with are pretty significant. So this is upon the recommendation of Council Ryan O'Donnell and the Council President William H. Dwight and the Counselor Gina Louise Shara. This is an ordinance of the city of Northampton. Massachusetts be ordained by the City Council of the City of Northampton. City Council assembled as follows. That the following chapter be added to the Code of Ordinances. Chapter 151, Campaign Finance. No candidate or candidate's committee shall accept campaign contributions from any individual if the aggregate of all such contributions by that individual for the benefit of that candidate or that candidate's committee exceeds in any calendar year a sum equal to one-half of the maximum aggregate individual contribution allowed per calendar year as specified in Mass. General Law, Chapter 55, Section 7A. Two, candidates for mayor shall provide the city clerk with a copy of their reports that have been filed with the Massachusetts Office of Campaign and Political Finance. Three, the city clerk shall within 15 days inspect all statements and reports of the municipal candidates or candidates committees. If upon examination of the records it appears that any candidate or political committee has reported the receipt of contributions in excess of the limits defined in Section 1, the city clerk shall, in writing, notify the candidate. Candidates shall have 15 days to purge all excess contributions by returning them to the individual who made them or donating them to a local charity operating in the city of Northampton. Any person failing to purge the excess contributions within such time shall have a complaint filed against him, are we being gender-specific? Is that the law? In the District Court of Northampton, and if found guilty, shall be punished by a fine not exceeding $300 or sum equal to the excess contributions, whichever is greater. I'll accept the motion and put that on the floor.
Second?
Uh, turn down.
Sure. Well, maybe I'll start with a request for a technical amendment, since the subject of the technical amendment popped out to you in the course of reading it. And then that way, we can debate an ordinance that is well-formed. And that is the last sentence that you just read, which was, any person failing to purge excess contributions within such time should have a complaint filed against him in the District Court of Northampton, and if found guilty, shall be punished by a fine not exceeding $300 or a sum equal to the excess contributions, whichever is greater. That sentence should simply read, any person failing to purge excess contributions within such time shall be subject to a fine not exceeding $300. And should that be seconded, or?
That is a significant amendment, so that motion's made to amend as a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion on the amendment?
Just not only do we remove the gender issue, but we can't charge over $300 generally in terms of a fine. And so this amendment comes with the approval of the solicitor.
Any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And now do you want to speak to the general order?
Sure. Well, thank you. I think that this is an interesting ordinance because it's, I think it's a good opportunity for the city. I think we often debate large issues, but we don't often have the chance to enact an ordinance that has a substantive effect on those issues. And I think you just saw with this ban on plastic bags that from time to time, we're able to actually do that. That's an ordinance that has an immediate effect on our city in a very positive way. And I'm hoping that other members of the council see the same thing that I do in this ordinance regarding campaign contributions. I'd like to describe just the background of the problem we're facing generally today in our country and in our Commonwealth, and kind of describe a scale of problems, starting from the huge down to the smaller level. The hugest example I can point to will probably come as no surprise to anyone, which was the Citizens United decision from several years ago, which, much like plastic bags, has dumped a different kind of refuse into, not our oceans, but into our democracy, and has created the age of the super PAC, and I think actually severely damaged politics and the ability of regular, everyday people to participate in civic discourse the way they should be able to. But that's not the only problem that we've seen in recent years. There was a similar landmark Supreme Court decision that followed on the heels of Citizens United called McCutcheon versus the Federal Election Commission, which continued on the same path of empowering wealthy donors and, in this case, specifically wealthy donors who want to keep giving more and more. And then we move down to the level of Massachusetts, and we see just recently that there is an out-of-state think tank. there is an out-of-state think tank, actually based in Arizona, it's called the Goldwater Institute, so you can, you can guess by the name that they're very neutral and non-ideologically driven, that's sarcasm for the, for the purpose of the minutes.
So did.
And they have come out and, and brought a lawsuit against Massachusetts over our century-old ban on corporate contributions. It's a ban that twenty states in the United States have, as well as the federal government. And then you go a little bit lower, below that level, and you find that last year, that the State House and Senate in Massachusetts passed a piece of legislation that did a lot of good things, in fact, it specifically dealt with some of the problems created by Citizens United, and independent expenditures and, and disclosure issues. But it also doubled the amount of money that individuals can give to candidates. It used to be five hundred dollars, that was the amount, that was in place since nineteen ninety-four, and it doubled to one thousand dollars. So suddenly we find alignment between our principles and talking about the big issues, and an ordinance that we can actually enact that will have an effect. We can't overturn Citizens United in Northampton, although there was a resolution, that City Council President Bill Dwight took the lead on, I think in two thousand twelve, and made a statement about. But what we can do something about is set a different campaign finance system up for the city and municipal offices, in a way that is not symbolic, but very real. And as the Council President explained by reading the ordinance, what this does is tie our limit for contributions to candidates for mayor, for city council, every municipal office, to one-half of the state level. Since the state level's now a thousand dollars, it would be five hundred. It's actually not a very radical change, it's actually kind of no change relative to last year, it's just not an acceptance of doubling the amount of money in our local I, I, I think I'll kind of stop there, there are other issues to get into, but I actually very much am looking forward to the comments of, of other counselors on this, and I'd also like to thank Counsel Sharer for working on this ordinance, as well as Counsel Dwight. And I guess I would just finally say that, I, I think, not, not to repeat myself, but I think this is an opportunity to, no pun intended, to put our money where our mouth is, and actually enact an ordinance based on our values. I'm not saying that people raise too much money or spend too much money in Northampton, we can debate that, but I actually prefer not to debate that. I, I actually got a request to go through campaign finance records and present the number of instances of five hundred dollar contributions that all of us may have gotten, or other candidates, and frankly, I just chose not to. So you may hear in the course of this debate that money in politics isn't a problem, a problem in Northampton, and I would submit to you that that is not the issue. The real issue is, what are our values, and can we take those values and, and translate them into a real campaign finance system that will serve the city, and I think this, this is a new chapter in our Code of Ordinances, it's a framework we can use to discuss and determine what that system is for us.
Counsel LeBarre.
Yes, looking at the attachment that apparently was sent from our city solicitor, Alan Seawold, and I had a talk with him today on this, because I had great concerns of the language he said, where I don't agree with her assessment, which he was talking about Margaret Hurley, the Director of Municipal Law. Alan did tell me that someone could attempt to challenge this, and it could go to court, and he explained to me the difference of this, and I also talked with another attorney today on this, that yes, it possibly could be challenged. And the difference is, if it's an election, you have a ballot, and it has a person's name on it, we're talking about the finance part of it, so if something like this went to go to court, we would probably have a good luck to stand on it, because there is a difference here between the election and a candidate's name, or whatever they're running for, this is financing. And that's where Alan said that there could be a challenge.
Right, for clarification, Attorney Hurley submitted, what she thought was a case establishing precedence that was relevant to this, and the solicitor, and I believe Counsel O'Donnell, and I agree that she was referring, it was a, a candidate, there was a special indication whether, on the ballot, it's indicated whether a candidate is an incumbent, but they want, also wanted to include what, that the candidate was a veteran, I believe it was.
Yes, they would put that.
And that special designation is not allowed by state law. It didn't seem, and this was a municipality trying to change the language and the way the ballots are presented, this has nothing to do with the ballot, this is campaign financing as opposed to elections, which you, you might say are inseparable, and unfortunately, they are in some respect, which is part of the impetus for the, the generation of this, but the fact is, it does, I don't see how that's particularly germane, as far as being challenged, everything we do, everything we vote on, everything we approve is subject to challenge. And I think in, in, in doing so, that we, we are, we are projecting and proclaiming essentially what we believe is best for our community, and whether it can sustain and survive, if it doesn't run counter to Mass General Law, Mass General Law hasn't really addressed this, I don't think there, no one ever expected that a little tiny community would suddenly say, no, 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 we don't want that much money in our campaigns. A lot of this, and I think this comes from the fact that, this is a reflection of the way this state is structured, and most of the influence and most of the votes are all centered around Boston, where it probably does cost more to run a campaign, I would imagine in Wellesley, if, you know, it's, it's probably, the, the cost is more significant, they're probably spending untold thousands of dollars to run a, a citywide campaign. It's not the case here in Northampton, and the thing that's, I, I think to the larger point that, that Counsel O'Donnell brought up, was the fact that money does have influence, a thousand dollars in this community would have, if not actual influence, it's certainly the appearance of influence, if one particular donor were to donate a thousand dollars to any one of our campaigns, that would be a significant amount of money, and it would be fair for the citizens to construe from that, that there may be undue influence embedded in that donation. We already get that with the five hundred dollars on some level, and, and I think that scrutiny is appropriate, that's why all these things are public record, so that we are subject to the scrutiny, it's, I am particularly proud of this state, because we do have some of the best campaign financing laws in the country. But the fact remains is if, and this is something that we've talked about, when we're talking about compensation, talking about expansion of inclusion, a more diverse body here in the council, and, and more opportunities for people to consider running, that we have to, we, we have to walk the talk, and this, in effect, does just that, it commits us to saying, while we stand in opposition, and that, and that resolution that Counsel O'Donnell referred to was voted almost unanimously, I think we had one dissenting vote, but we, you know, resolutions are easy, there's no particular, you know, it's just speaking our resolve, it doesn't necessarily codify anything, this codifies it, this has us owning it, and, and I was, I was glad to see him present this, and I was grateful for the opportunity to be a co-sponsor on this. Counsel Adams.
Oh, please.
Two points, one is that, the last time this was raised, the, the contributions raised was ninety-four, right, so I mean, I, I do think that campaigns have cost more, cost more to run than they did over twenty years ago, just, just, you know, I think that all the, the costs of, of everything have gone up, from, you know, lawn signs to literature, but also twenty years ago, I don't think that technology was used as much, for example, I don't think candidates had, you know, websites, et cetera, to the greatest, to, to the extent that they do now, and this doesn't really take that into consideration, because it leaves it the same amount, but I don't really have a problem with that. I just wanted to point it out, that doesn't really take into consideration the cost of campaigns have probably gone up substantially since, in the last twenty years, but with respect to the legal issue, certainly, any, any, anything can be challenged, but I think it's slightly different when you have the Attorney General telling you that it's illegal, and that's what we have here.
Well, what, I, I don't think, I'm sorry, was this, I, I, she did not?
She opined that it was illegal, I mean, that's, she, that's her, in her opinion, it wasn't legal, I spoke to Alan Seawold today, and the Attorney General's opinion, their office believes that it's illegal, and he believes it's legal. That's, that's the clear conversation I had with Attorney Seawold, and, and I would just feel more comfortable if we had a, a written memorandum of law from him, so, before, just because, you know, there's, there's the AG saying it's not legal because they believe that it regulates elections, and we can't do that, and Solicitor Seawold says, he has a different opinion, he believes that it's, it's regulating just contributions, I think was his point, that we can do that, and I think that that's, I think that that's like a summary of the two different opinions. So I would just feel, feel more comfortable if we had a written opinion, a written memorandum from him, before taking, even a first vote on this, because I, I would, I would, if, I, I support the message of the ordinance, and, and it would be nice if we were unanimous, for my vote, I'd like to have that first, so, that's my request.
May I offer some background?
Yeah, please, please.
I, I understand that sentiment completely, and I think what's at play here is the difference between a town and a city, because as you know, any town bylaw pretty much has to be approved in advance by the Attorney General, and they do issue a written decision. That's not the case with the city ordinance, in fact, if you look at the plastic bag ban that Cambridge just passed, that ban actually has a component that ours doesn't, which is a requirement that paper bags have a fee. Now, there's nowhere in Mass General Law that provides the explicit authority for a city to charge a fee for a paper bag, but until a court determines otherwise, then within the, the context of, of the Home Rule Act and the other restrictions that cities have, the Attorney General, and it's not the Attorney General herself, of course, it's, it's Margaret Hurley, Director of Municipal Law, of the Municipal Law Unit, who is offering kind of advisory, kind of guidance, it's not a written opinion saying, no, this is, this would be overturned. Until you have something like that, or you have a decision by a court, then I think we are very much empowered, and not just empowered, we, we should be enacting ordinances that are in the best interest of the city. I actually think that if it's dangerous, although I understand the need to be cautious, I think it's dangerous to read the Home Rule Act too narrowly, and I think actually, the Solicitor's opinion, it's not a full memo, but the substance is pretty well fleshed out, which is, and actually Counsel LeBarre pretty much summed it up well, I think, there are explicit exemptions under the Home Rule Act, that things that we can't do as a city, and elections is one of them, but this is not an elections issue, it's a campaign finance issue. Look at our zoning law, in our zoning law, we have regulations about how big a lawn sign can be. Lawn sign is, is election-related, but no one would argue that, that Home Rule Act says we can't, you know, regulate lawns, and I'm not trying to draw a frivolous comparison at all, I'm just trying to provide background, I think that's how the Solicitor looks at it, I certainly look at it that way, and so I feel we're actually on very, very firm legal ground in this regard.
Counsel Carney.
I guess, to the Counselor, would, do you see any drawback in actually asking the Solicitor to draw up a memo explaining and pointing, comparing the AG's opinion on this matter to his own, and just point by point for the record so that we had that, do you see a drawback in having that for us, for, for reference, so that it's clear when we're, when we're voting on this, whether, you know, we are taking an action that may be in direct disagreement with the AG's office, but doing it anyway?
I think that's a, a good question, I guess the way I feel is that, that has been, that has been done.
The memo, I mean.
Yeah, I, I feel the memo, the substance of that memo is, that you may be looking for, has been expressed by the Solicitor, just not in a, in a multi-page document, I feel that the point.
So just one sentence in an email, I just feel like, I think something as, as, as important as this, and as, as groundbreaking as this, maybe warrants, given the fact that there, there is an expressed, direct contradiction between the opinion of the Solicitor and the opinion of the AG's office, that just having something more substantive than the one sentence in an email, even if it's on letterhead and then just take that, something that we would have to, to point to, I think, do you see a drawback in that, or, because there may be, and that's what I'm asking, do you see, is that maybe something that could detract, or?
I, I, I don't see a drawback in more discussion on the legality, I guess I just, the Attorney General has not written, has not issued a written opinion of equal length that we would have to rebut.
Could we ask for that, could we ask just for something since we'd been, because we're being groundbreaking on this, rather than wait for it to be a, a court case, really kind of on the table, have things on the table right up front?
I guess, in my, well, I mean, in theory, the Solicitor could provide a great deal of legal information, and so, I guess it would be at what level, a comfort level would be reached, and so, I mean, I'm not sure what that comfort level would be in this particular case, but there's certainly no drawback in more information, I feel, the more information there is, I mean, I, I feel the facts are firmly on our side, and right now, because there's no written objection from the Attorney General, I guess I would be uncertain why we would, we would do that, but, yeah.
Counsel Adams.
I mean, I, I agree with Counselor Carney, Solicitor Seawold writes very thorough memos, and they're, and, and they're well-written, and he cites all the law, and I do think that that's, is great of protection for us, if this were challenged, then his, then his, then just his mere opinion and, you know, inclination, I think there is a difference, as Counsel Carney said, particularly because there is, there is a, there is a difference of opinion with respect to the Attorney General, I think it's important for us, and I think it's, I think it's worth putting this off for that, I don't think we're in any great rush here, the issue's under consideration, and I think it would only benefit us.
I'm assuming you're referring to this letter that I was CC'd on, oh no, you know what, I'm looking at the wrong one, I'm looking at the paid sick time one, I'm sorry.
It's actually the fir, the first page, if you look at the electronic version of the ordinance as it's given to us, the first page of it is the Alan Seawold email, where he says, attached is the revised version of the proposed campaign contribution limit ordinance that I have approved as to form with one caveat. I have discussed this proposed ordinance with Margaret Hurley, Director of Municipal Law Unit in the Office of the Attorney General. She has opined that this ordinance is not within the authority of the city to enact, I don't agree with her assessment, but there is some uncertainty in that regard. I'm, I'm less comfortable relying on this, you know, two-sentence description of a conversation than something that actually is much more substantive, so that when we do pass this, when we do, we have something that is clearly saying, we disagree, if that's the case, we disagree with the opinion of Margaret Hurley, or maybe Margaret Hurley would write for the purposes of the AG's office, but we could say, the city of, we, City Council, this body disagrees with the opinion, if that's the case, and then it's on the table at front, rather than having us wait for, you know, a possible court case, and, and then some of the legwork is actually done in advance.
Counsel Spector hasn't spoken on it yet.
I will speak to this, I just want to thank you first for bringing this up, and I have every intention to support it, however, I do agree, because there doesn't seem to be a rush on this, I, I mean, we may even want to have our Solicitor here at our next meeting, so we can ask some, I just want to get more of a feel on the, on the legal side, but again, I really want to support this, I plan to support it, and I thank you for the work you've put into it, but I, I would think we should wait until we have a little more clarity around the legal piece.
Counsel LeBarre.
I have to agree with Counselor Carney, I took it amongst myself, because I was very unsure about this language that our city Solicitor had stated, and I needed to know exactly what he meant by, I don't agree with her assessment, but there is some uncertainty in that regard. So, how can you vote on something if you know, don't know what the legality part of is it? If I had not called him, I wouldn't feel like the way I felt now, because I could vote on it, okay, knowing that, yes, it could be challenged, but not to worry about it, because it's strictly financing, but either which way, if you want to have But either which way, if you want to have the city solicitor come in, that's fine with me.
Councillor Specter?
Well, I just want to, councillor, your comments just changed a little bit because you're adding some more information, which maybe that I could support this night. You're saying you spoke to our solicitor?
I said I called him on my own because we were voting on this tonight and I needed an explanation. I had called our council clerk in regards to, well, what did, you know, our city solicitor have to say? And she just said that he had said that. I took it amongst myself to call him.
So I have a question. In ordinance, did the city solicitor, was he there to answer any of these questions at the ordinance committee meeting?
No.
No, not in person. He reviewed it in advance.
Well, I was at the ordinance committee meeting and we pretty much relied on the conversations that councillor O'Donnell had with the solicitor. At that time, I said, you know, I'd be a little bit more comfortable with a memo or something or hadn't seen that. But I think we decided to go ahead and let this come to the full council for some discussion about where we would, where we would take this from.
Councillor Adams and then councillor Specter?
In my conversation with him today, he was very similar to, no, just, we had a ten-minute conversation. He said, he said, "I'm not certain that this is legal." He said, "I think it is, they think it's not, you never know till a person with the rule decides." That's what he said. So, I mean, you know, I...
But councillor O'Donnell, you want to respond to that point?
I would like to respond to that point. I certainly wasn't in the conversation we had with the solicitor, but I'd be surprised if he said, "I don't know if it's legal." The fact is that it's presumed that this is something we can do until a court says otherwise. Again, no city or town has done this, so it is not a risk of doing something illegal. I just want to be clear about that. Fully understanding the need for more information from some, if that's what they want, but we're not proposing to do anything illegal and the solicitor doesn't believe that this is possibly legal. It's not a risk that it's illegal.
Councillor Adams, respond to that.
Now, fortunately, I was taking notes during the conversation and I'll tell you exactly what he said. He's not certain he would stand legal scrutiny. If you want to make a distinction between that and it might not be legal, you can go ahead, but that's what he said.
I do.
So I would like an opinion from him. I mean, that's my perspective.
Now councillor Specter?
So I'm going to make a motion that we table this till the next meeting.
Second.
Motion's made to table, there is no debate, so roll call on the motion to table till the next meeting.
Councillor Carney?
Yes.
Councillor Dwight?
No.
Councillor Klein?
No.
Councillor LeBarge?
No.
Councillor O'Donnell?
No.
Councillor Shara?
No.
Councillor Specter?
Yes.
Councillor Adams?
Yes.
The motion fails. So we're back to the regular order. One of the things I can suggest, of course, is that none of these things, tabling it doesn't, the absence of a table doesn't preclude the solicitation of an opinion. So we can...
We're coming back at second reading.
We're coming back at second reading. That's exactly right. So that we can have, we can have, ask the solicitor to...
Could you do that? I request that you do that.
That's good.
Yep. So I will ask the solicitor for a fleshed-out formal opinion.
Oh, I meant the Attorney General, I wanted your...
You want me to go ask it?
I'm just kidding.
The Attorney General's, the transmissions that I've been subject, that I've had an opportunity to read from the Attorney General's office is that they're kind of reluctant to actually opine on the issue. They have sort of said, and they brought up a precedent case which I'm inclined to agree with the solicitor based on reading it, is that there's no corollary. I understand what she's sort of saying.
The request is the solicitor.
So my guess is that he will, in the process of developing, then follow up with Attorney Hurley and we'll see. So I will, so knowing that I will make a request of the solicitor to present us with a formal memo describing his concerns, if any, and his interpretation of how this might present. That's...
Again, just to be clear, could you ask him to contrast his opinion between the Attorney General's office, as he understands it, just from the information he's received from the AG's office, and his? That would be a more thorough memo, just to show, this is what the Attorney General's office has said regarding this matter. This is my opinion.
Okay.
That would be more helpful for me.
That said, we're now, councillor Klein, you haven't spoken on this issue yet?
I just have a question for councillor, all the councillors that co-sponsored this. We don't have any precedence throughout the state of Massachusetts of any other city, small or large, that has taken on a similar kind of ordinance?
Well, the one similar ordinance, which is not quite the same kind of area of law, is Somerville, which has a distinction for developers. It's more part of their zoning code. So if you want to get a permit in Somerville and you're a developer, you have, you have special restrictions.
But in terms of campaign finance reform, we have not seen anything like this in any city in Massachusetts yet.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, and the Somerville, developers are precluded from donating. They have to register and then they're precluded from donating, there's a cap. So that was a special financing law that was created, which would probably be more relevant to financing as opposed to elections, but there's no other, no other precedent so far.
I just, I find the Attorney General's office opinion a little bit odd because there are many precedents, not in Massachusetts, albeit, but there are many precedents of cities around the United States that in fact have passed similar kinds of legislate, pieces of legislation and that may be not in accordance with what the state has set out as the campaign finance limit. So I can't imagine that Massachusetts is going to be different in that sense.
Yeah. If I may, I agree into that point. One of the benefits of what we're doing is that we may expand what it's acknowledged cities and towns can do. Wouldn't that be a good outcome as well? To do that and have other cities follow suit if they want.
It could be wonderful if Northampton could be a precedent setter in this regard.
I agree.
Call a question. Call a question. Okay. Roll call, please.
Councillor Dwight?
Yes.
Councillor Klein?
Yes.
Councillor LeBarge?
Yes.
Councillor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Councillor Shara?
Yes.
Councillor Specter?
Yes.
Councillor Adams?
Yes.
Councillor Carney?
Yes.
Passage is unanimously in first reading and will be subject to another vote on our first meeting in May and hopefully with a memo from the solicitor predating that and we'll have an opportunity to review that. Thank you. Oh, boy, my battery is dying fast, so thank God we're getting near the end. This is a...
Is that your personal battery or?
Well, no, no. No, my personal battery's good for another three hours if you... This is an ordinance pertaining to city trees and this is to refer to the Committee on Rules, Ordinance Appointments and Ordinances Planning and the Northampton Public Shade Tree Commission for their first order of business.
Second.
Motion's made in seconded for referral. Any discussion on the referral? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. I have no updates. There's no information requests? No, no new business? I'm not sure why I public comment at the end of this. I'm just listening, I'm checking.
Motion to adjourn.
There's been a motion made to adjourn. Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all very much. Have a great night.
Thank you.